Good evening and welcome. The time is six o'clock and I call this meeting to order. This is September 22nd, 2025 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we kindly ask everyone, please silence your cellphones and join us with Councilwoman DeShiel leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. At this time, we invite my friend Overseer Timothy Palmer from The Well Church to give our city invocation.
Father, we thank you for this time together and we pray that we have grace, responsiveness, clarity, as we dialogue about our communities that we so very much love. And we pray that as we are communicating with one another, there's receptiveness, there is adaptability, emotional intelligence, and ingenuity as we are creative in solutions to help our community thrive and become better. So we're just really grateful for everyone gathered here today and we pray that this time be blessed, fruitful, flourishing, and fulfilling, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Overseer. We'll pivot to Councilwoman Gregory for a council proclamation.
I'm going to go ahead and just start reading the proclamation. Whereas Duchenne muscular dystrophy is a neuromuscular disorder caused by a genetic defect on the DMD gene, the largest gene in the human genome. The DMD gene has 2.4 million base pairs and contains 79 exons and carries the instructions for the creation of the dystrophin protein. I hope I'm saying that right. Whereas Duchenne was first described by French neurologist Guillaume Benjamin Armand Duchenne in the 1860s. In 1986, researchers identified that the particular gene on the X chromosome that, when mutated, caused Duchenne. And in 1987, the protein associated with the DMD gene was identified by Dr. Eric Hoffman and Dr. Louis Kunkel and named dystrophin. And whereas Duchenne is the most common fatal genetic disorder diagnosed in childhood affecting approximately one in every 5,000 live male births and every one eh in 50 million live female births each year. The Duchenne gene is found on the X chromosome and it primarily affects boys. However, it occurs across all races, socioeconomic backgrounds, and cultures. And whereas Duchenne results in progressive loss of strength because dystrophin is absent, the muscle cells are very easily damaged. The progressive muscle weakness leads to serious medical problems, particularly issues relating to the heart and lungs. For these reasons, people with Duchenne have a shortened lifespan. And whereas Duchenne can be passed from parent to child, but approximately 35% of cases occur because of random spontaneous mutation. In other words, it can affect anyone. Although there are medical treatments that may help slow its progression, there is currently no cure for Duchenne because it is a rare disease, one of our greatest tools in the fight to end Duchenne is raising awareness. And whereas September has been recognized worldwide as Duchenne Awareness Month and September 7th has been recognized as World Duchenne Awareness Day by the United Nations since November of 2023. The seventh day of the ninth month represents the 79 exons of the DMD gene. The symbol of a red balloon is used worldwide to recognize this day. And now therefore, DeSean M. Doughty, President of the City Council, does hereby proclaim September as World Duchenne Awareness Month in our city and invite all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of Duchenne muscular dystrophy.
Thank you, DeSean. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, Michelle.
My name is Adief DiMolopoli. I am an employee of the City of Salisbury and I am also the city liaison to the Disability Advisory Committee. I would just like to thank the City Council, Michelle, DeSean, everybody for, you know, this proclamation. It really means a lot. Duchenne is, it's a condition I've lived with my entire life and raising awareness is one of the ways that, you know, we just spread the word about the condition and for those who are living with it. So establishing September as Duchenne Awareness Month is a big deal for this reason. And, you know, Salisbury now joins many, many cities worldwide in accepting September as Duchenne Awareness Month. So again, I would like to thank the City Council.
We thank you as well. Thank you for your, for your fight.
Great. I got it. Yep.
All right, next we move on to our presentation and adoption of the agenda. Ms. English, if you wouldn't mind reviewing tonight's agenda?
So this evening's agenda legislative session, we have award of bids and declaration of surplus by Mr. Low. We have one resolution, 3424. We have four second reading ordinances, 2952, 2953, 2954, and 2955. We have one ordinance for first reading and that is 2956.
Thank you, Ms. English. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have a question. Sharon, did you get second?
Two of us did.
Yeah, I think it was, it was two and two, so we'll...
Whatever.
It was three of us, I think, that did the motion.
Let's read this again, just for, just for clarity, for the record. I entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we invite Mr. Low from the Department of Procurement for our award of bids and declaration of surplus.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
How am I? So there are two items on the agenda for award of bids, but I'm going to ask if we can table the elevated water tank recoding until another time. I had some information come in over the weekend regarding the potential awardee. So I need to do my due diligence in investigating some of that, but we can proceed with the other.
So we'll just split them up when we do the ask. Thank you.
Okay. So the Department of Procurement seeks award of bid approval from the City of Salisbury Council for solicitations defined herein. The city filed required bidding practices as defined by the City of Salisbury's Charter and Municipal Code of Ordinances and publicly posted the solicitation for the city's competitively bid procurements on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, and the State of Maryland's website, email, and marketplace. So the contract I'm presenting for award is ITBA 26107, the zinc pyrophosphate for corrosion control. The scope of work for this is delivery of zinc pyrophosphate on an as needed basis to the water plants. We released bids in late July, opened bids in late August. We had a total of one bid from Shannon Chemical, so we're recommending the award for them. Estimated cost per year is $189,450, which is actually a reduction from our current contract rate that we're on in the GL account, is one of the waterworks accounts. This contract does have a renewal clause, so it's a one-year term with a potential for one-year renewals.
Thank you, Mr. Low. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ITBA-26-107 as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving ITBA-26-107, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I'll also entertain a motion to table award of bid ITB26-105 at the direction of Mr. Low.
So moved. Second.
Thank you for that.
Yes. And council, any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Declaration of surplus?
All right. For surplus this evening, item one are various surplus weapons for Salisbury Police Department. Item two on the list is two vehicles that are being retired from the Salisbury Police Department. And then item three, some various equipment and vehicles for field operations, so that's nine, nine units from them. All the vehicle information is listed in the packet. When it comes to the weapons for Salisbury police, any of those regulated items are disposed of either with witness, I think, between state police or they're traded into the dealers that they're going to be purchasing new items from.
Thank you for that. That was one of my questions. I've had a question about that. All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the declaration of surplus as presented by Mr. Low.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor of approving the declaration of surplus, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr.
Low. Have a good evening.
I will move on to our resolutions. I'll entertain a motion in a second to, motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3424.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution Number 3424 is a resolution appointing Tom Horton to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending September 2028.
All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3424 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. English. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2952 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bush.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ordinance Number 2952, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment for the mayor to appropriate funds for the FY 2026 General Fund, Water and Sewer Fund, Parking Fund, and Stormwater Fund for additional salaries and fringe associated with the union negotiations. This is before you tonight for second reading and there's been no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2952, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2953 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2953, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment to transfer PFAS settlement proceeds from the Water Sewer Fund to the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund, also before you tonight for second reading.
All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2953, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2954 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2954, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Office of Problem-Solving Court's discretionary grant adult drug court program to provide overtime reimbursement to police officers conducting curfew and contract compliance checks on clients within the City of Salisbury, before you tonight for second reading.
All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2954, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2955 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2955, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for land acquisition for the North Prong Park project using allocated proceeds of the public improvement bonds of 2024. This is the last ordinance tonight for second reading.
All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2955, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2956 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2956, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Title 15 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Buildings and Construction to Add the Adoption and Reference to the International Property Maintenance Code, as you mentioned, before you tonight for first reading.
And all those in favor, sorry, of approving ordinance Number 2956, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll pivot to the public comment section of this tonight's agenda. Those wishing to speak on any topic are asked to go to the podium and you will have three minutes to speak. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name, if you are a city resident or if you're representing a business organization. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'll stand down.
Fair enough. Hello, my name is KT, city resident, still Sharon's neighbor.
Are you moving?
Usually I come here and I'm mad about something, but today I'm absolutely thrilled because this past weekend, we had our third annual Maryland Folk Festival and it was just incredible.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something worth clapping for. I'll give up some seconds for that. And I especially want to thank the City of Salisbury and in particular, the Arts, Business, and Culture Department for their ongoing support of the local cultural arts. Local music matters and I'm glad that my city agrees with me, so thank you so much.
If I could have a moment of, I think we should, thank you, KT, for always, for always driving that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Lee Monroe. I organize the Rite of Silence Maryland Eastern Shore. In 2022, Zero Deaths Maryland reached out to me and asked me if I would organize the first and only official Rite of Silence on Maryland's eastern shore. The Rite of Silence is actually a worldwide event. It's held to honor cyclists who have been hit, injured, or killed as a result of a collision with the driver of a vehicle. I tell you this because it's important to what I'm going to ask for. Thank you for installing the bike lanes back on Carroll Avenue. I appreciate that. I would ask that the council and the city make everyone aware that there are now crosswalks and pedestrians and bicycles are crossing four lanes of traffic now. We need to be really aware that those crosswalks are four lanes and only one is protected at Waverly. I would ask that the rail trail grant be addressed. I would like to know where that money is and what we plan to do with it because if we want bicyclists and pedestrians off the street, give them a place to go, give them a place to exercise, to get fresh air and sunshine. It makes for a healthier community. I would like to know where that, the taxpayers deserve to know where that money is and when it plans to be complete. And finally, I'm not alone when I say that I was, it was refreshing to see the summons to appear in court for the issue to the driver of the city-owned vehicle with respect to the collision with the pedestrian on August 4th at South and Highway 13. I'm looking forward to the promised transparency. Thank you all for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. A couple of things. I was one of the first people in the room tonight before your 5:30 closed work session and I want to address that and also the closed work session that's set for the, later in the evening. Both of these have to do with lawsuits involving the city parking lots that have been sold for development. The one at 5:30 happens to be the three big lots, 111 and 15. And I want to say this, Mr. DeShiel tried to keep this in an open session. Didn't go anywhere on that, unfortunately. Why is the council continuing to handle these things in secrecy? You didn't convene that closed session to confer with council. There is plenty of public information that's out there. However, people have to work to get it and some people may not be as familiar as some of us, and that would include me, who practiced law for a number of years, on how you get that information. I can bring you up to date a little bit on that Lot 115 and 11 case. I looked at the court's docket entries today online. It is set right now, if you look at the docket, for a trial in April. However, also today, a joint motion, that means by the different parties in the lawsuit, was filed to postpone this or at least to reschedule the scheduling order in the court. Normally, in my experience, that is, they are going to defer the trial date to a later time. I don't know how that is for sure, but that's my guess. The other thing is affordable housing. We've been talking about it now for years. Nothing's happened. I'm going to suggest that the mayor convene an Affordable Housing Task Force, at least a couple of council members, and frankly, I'm going to suggest Ms. DeShiel and Ms. Jackson because they have been the ones that have indicated real concern about this. And then maybe five members from around the city that actually don't have to all be city members. So let's get this going. Other towns and counties are doing it in Maryland and throughout the country, and I'm talking about serious affordable housing requirements. So that, for example, if you remember about a year ago, when this was brought up in terms of the development, on the parking lots, Mr. Gellis said, oh, we can't have affordable housing. That's not our business model. That's code for, we don't want that kind of people living in our project. We need some action on this, folks. Let's do it.
My name is Carolyn Walgemuth. I'm a resident of the city, in particular of Granby's Cove. So I'm here to explain a few things to the councils tonight about the annexation zoning for North Shoemaker Pond. Because you will vote on this before I would have a chance to comment on it at work session. R10 zoning should be the recommendation for North Shoemaker Pond annexation. Wycomico County Code requires a minimum of 25 acres for planned unit development in an R20 lot. This county's own R20 lot does not qualify for development of townhouses. It's actually less than half that amount in acreage. The developers trying to skirt that acreage requirement via annexation into the city. The city should not grant a zoning designation that would allow overdevelopment of this property at the expense of current adjacent city residents and to the detriment of the city's own valuable resource of Shoemaker Pond. City Code defines Zone R10 as preserving the character of both newly planned and established single-family residential areas to promote and enhance the quality of life and environmental attributes which are essential part of the city. Zone R10 is compatible with existing low-density residential single-family homes along the north bank of Shoemaker Pond, a treasured Salisbury ecological resource that must be protected from overdevelopment. Maintaining the continuity of existing established neighborhoods situated along the banks of Shoemaker Pond is essential. Granby's Cove and Shoemaker Woods are the nearest adjacent neighborhoods to the proposed annexation property and are zoned for single-family homes. I, along with my neighbors, purchased homes in this area of the city specifically because of the established neighborhood with a quiet, peaceful area of the city without much traffic and low residential density. Furthermore, all homes on Long War, Granby's Run, Shoemaker Woods Circle, and Shoemaker Woods Road and continuing west all the way down to Beaglin Park Drive are all single-family homes with established easements due to the proximity to Shoemaker Pond. Increased stormwater runoff from high-density development on the north side of North Shoemaker Drive such as Stonegate have already caused significant issues in Shoemaker Pond. Therefore, this property should be zoned R10 pond annexation into the city if you choose to do so. Thank you.
Demetra Marshall-Lennon, Wycomico County. My issue is about what's going on at Pemberton Manor. Pemberton Manor needs to take accountability. The tenants are being ignored and left without fair chance to recertify. The property manager avoids answering the door on purpose, leaving tenants stuck with market rent when they should be paying subsidized housing. I have been advocating for this for some months now. I have also been in contact with the mayor about this issue. They do not have adequate access to recertification. As I stand before you guys, there are people are homeless right now because of this. The landlord shuts her door and she do not answer it. She avoids them at a cost. Ever since I've made this post, the office has been open. A lot of people have been in my inbox telling me about the, the situations going on. You have elderly people that have never worked it there in their life and they are facing homelessness. How can we deal with the homeless population in Wycomico County if we're faced with these issues? If these people don't have adequate means to recertify, they are playing with people's livelihood. Okay, that was me addressing the Pemberton issue as a resident of Wycomico County. Hats off and let me address another issue as the Chair of the Maryland, of Wycomico County Democratic Central Committee. We want to make ourselves very clear, we oppose 287G. We want to make ourselves very clear, we oppose 287G. We do, we want to make ourselves very clear, we oppose 287G. Anything. We do, we do not want ICE agent law enforcement coming in our community acting as cops. We don't want that. If you oppose 287G and you're in this room, please stand up. We oppose 287G. We, the citizens of Wycomico County oppose it. We asking our leadership, we're asking our, everybody, our constituents, our neighbors to stand together and band together to oppose 287G. Uh-uh, that's not going down in Wycomico County, not under my watch. Y'all know, dag on well, I'm gonna give you a run for your money. So don't look down, you better look up because y'all see... You better look up, because y'all see my face, y'all better see it well. Again, my name is Demetra Marshall-Lennon, Chair of Wycomico County, and we oppose 287G. And the time is up, and I got to go.
Good evening. Jovanosa. Okay. So just to be clear, you oppose 287G. Good. Me too. Very good. I'll talk about that a little bit later, though, in the session. I wanted to just clarify a few things, and actually, real quick, being that this happened tonight, I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Tom Horton on his appointment to the Bicycle Commission. Tom is a phenomenal candidate, and he's biked pretty much all over the continent of this one, as well as much of East Africa. So he's a phenomenal guy, colleague, and I'm glad he's there. Shout out as well, as KT said, it was a tremendous festival. It's the first year where we've had good weather, I think, all three days. Was there all three days myself. Some of my students performed. It was absolutely phenomenal, very family-friendly. It was just great on so many levels. So thank you to the city and to ABCD for helping coordinate, and thank you for the awesome audio. With regard to the closed session, I want to echo Mr. Taylor on this point. There's absolutely no legal need for having gone into closed session. All of these documents and issues are publicly available, and the court records, they're, they are a bit challenging to retrieve, as Mr. Taylor said, but my perspective is very simple. It's your job as the council to be transparent about issues that affect us, including our tax money. I realize there are always fears about if some developers will scold you behind the scenes, but you should work for the people, not just for certain corporations. And so on that note, I implore you to rethink in the future going into closed session when you don't legally have to. It's a bad look. It leaves the public with much, much concern, and frankly, a lot of distrust. So please do better on that. Thank you.
Michael Langford, 1026 Arthur Court, city of Salisbury resident. Couple of quick things. Just a suggestion, I don't know if anyone's ever looked at this, is it possible that we make ordinances available, like on the Salisbury website, for transparency and the public's input? Just because a lot of times, by the time you guys even see, like, this first reading, I remember there being a lot of chatter about that International Property Maintenance Code, and it'd be really great if, like, we could just review it. Again, maybe it's not accessible or easy to break down for everyone, but if it was just, you know, centralized city website, able for us to review ordinances, then we, the people can have conversations with you, our representatives, about the topic. So, and then, the other thing that I wanted to say in regards to that, too, I think that instead of an International Property Maintenance Code, when I looked into this organization, they're a nonprofit agency, so they don't actually have any legal liability over, like, public safety. I think we should just adopt the state's code and be compliant with the state, because the Maryland Building Performance Standards are updated under the Department of Labor annually. So then we know we're good. And then, the other aspect is 287G. I think, like the ordinances, if there is any kind of discussion, I think that in order for the public to have input, in order to have the full transparency and accountability of the police, then making these contracts available before, you know, before the public so that people can have something that they're bringing, rather than just, "I'm worried about this outcome for people," which is legitimate and valid, but also, then people can easily dismiss it. Whereas if we have facts, if we have information as the public, then people can respond in a meaningful way. So I think with the ICE thing, we just need more transparency there as well. So that is what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I can answer the one with the resolutions and ordinances. Same thought. If you Google and if you go to where resolutions are, there's no hyperlink to go to some of resolutions. I have to ask the clerk's office myself. It's probably a large feat, but it's something I think we should put some time into. So thank you for underscoring that. We'll look into that and give you some timeline. But myself, when I have to ask, hey, what's ordinance number, whatever, we have to go into the archives, but thank you for that. My apologies for that point of order. Yep. Anyone else wishing to speak, please take this moment of opportunity and three minutes to speak on any topic during this time.
Good evening. It's good to see each and every one of you. My name is Monica Brooks. I'm President of Wycomico County, NAACP, and a resident in the city of Salisbury. There's a couple of quick things I did want to address. I want to say, before I get to 287G, which I will, I get a ton of calls from people who just cannot find anywhere to live. I barely got one person in Pokomoke, and that was a few years ago, and that's how far they had to go to find somewhere. So I just want to put that plug when we were talking about affordable housing. Thank you. Because it is super necessary. It needs to be done appropriately, yes, but we need it. We need places for people to live. And then we have the New Morris Street Clinic that's going to be going up. The groundbreaking was today. Those residents are coming here, and where they gonna live? So it's not even, it's not even all just affordable housing, it's housing. We need somewhere to live, okay? And I'm going to say, just in response, I know, you know, people go back and forth on this density, non-density, and all this stuff, and I, I just came back from a couple weeks in Kenya. I think in some ways, we need to get over this, this idea of, like, we need, we can't have nobody else next to us. We waste a lot of time talking about not, "I don't want people over here, it's too many people," and all of that stuff. You don't know what too many people look like. And some people will be happy to have too many people, because at least they have a roof over their heads. So I think people need to be cognizant of that. I'm a homeowner. Yes, I am. But this idea of, like, can't put another space behind my house, I'm not with that. Now, as for 287G, this kind of legislation is really pointless. We, we are literally in a position where you all get to make a decision, Mayor, Randy, I just forgot your name that fast. Randy. To engage, to make a choice to engage, you're not forced to do this. This is not something that is put upon your plate. It's a choice. And with that choice, I think you need to hear what the residents really feel about that choice. You're not going to have the liberty to make all the decisions that you would want to have with your law enforcement if you engage with the federal government. The federal government will supersede certain decisions that you make, as well as financial decisions. So why would we even take, listen, you guys have been struggling over the budget, talking about money you don't have, why are you gonna give up more money? It makes absolutely no sense. So I just say, just take a step back, and also give your City of Salisbury Police Department an opportunity to walk back some stuff they need to walk back, so they can build relationship with the community, as opposed to losing it with getting in 287G.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. John Fontifilo-Ginn, and Wycomico County resident, and I'm representing CATA, which is Farm Workers Support Committee, and representing all the immigrants. I urge the council, the council members, and everyone here to reject 287G agreement. And 287G builds communities, not fear. The 287G program opens the door to racial and ethnic profiling. When local police are deporting to act as immigration agents, people are often targeted, not because of what they've done, but because of how they look, how they speak, and how, where they come from. So, and who ends, who ends up being profiled? Moms and dads, children, your neighbors, your kids, classmates, the people teaching your children about faith, cleaning your homes, caring for your elderly and sick loved one, building your neighborhoods and putting food on your table. These are no strangers, they are members of our community. That's why we're calling for an end to the 287G agreement in Wycomico, on the eastern shore, across Maryland, and throughout all the country. So we believe in solidarity, not surveillance. We believe in community, not criminalization. We believe in building communities rooted in trust, compassion, and unity, not fear, division, or suspicion. Let's stand up together for justice and dignity for all. And one last thing I want to say, if you don't stand up against injustice, now you're gonna face it yourself, but alone. You're gonna face it yourself, but alone, because you rejected all the allies that you have. So you have to focus on that. Stand up for justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The name is Kinson Raymond. By looking at me, can you tell what status I have?
No.
No, I don't think so. So this is what the 287G is calling for, racial profiling. And as I've said it before, it's going to remove local officers, the police, from doing their jobs. ICE agent, federal government, would pretty much come in here and taking control of it. Division. Family separation. Kids wondering where mommy and daddy is. That's not what we want. These families, hard-working individuals, they came here seeking a better life. Now, ever since I grew, I was growing up, yes, I was not born here, but I'm a proud U.S. citizen. I always heard that USA is the land of opportunities. Is that what we are? So what I'm seeing going on today, is that what we want? Is that what you want to bring, I mean, your grandkids, the kids that you, is that what you taught them growing up? Is that what your parents taught you as growing up? No. I had a chance to grow up with my mom. My dad was here. He came here to the U.S. And then legally, he brought us over. Now, we don't believe if anyone committed any crimes, let the, they deal with the law. Illegal immigrations, let the court system deal with them. Every person, immigration, lawbreakers, there's someone in place for each and every single one of them. So let the process deal with it. So, remaining silent, you do have a right to remain silent, but I ask that you vocalize your voice when it comes to 287G. Speak out. If you forward, Sid, don't just remain silent, but we, the people, we say that we do not want 287G here in Wycomico County or the city of Salisbury. Now, if you look at throughout the whole U.S., anyone that gets in agreement with 287G with ICE, a year or two later, they want to retrieve, they want to remove themselves from the contract. Ask yourself why. You know? Now, again, let's, let us have a public comment. If you want to talk, you have a contract, you have an OMOU with the city, with the Sheriff Department, with ICE, let us see what the contract is all about, and let us have a civil, you know, communication.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any topic? Seeing none, time is 6:43. This legislative session is adjourned, and we convene in work session. We will invite our associate planner, Mr. Zach White, for our annexation zoning discussion for North Shoemaker Drive.
All right. Good evening.
Hey, Zach.
How's it going? All right. So this is for the...
One second. And our director of, well, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Nick Forte, tech director.
Thank you.
Structure Development.
Okay. So this is for, this is the work session for the annexation for the North Shoemaker Drive. This was introduced to you guys, I believe, in June. It's a 12.465 acre parcel roughly, where they're proposing to build 60 townhomes on. I'm not going to read this whole memo, because it's kind of long, but I'll kind of give you the gist of, you know, like, what we kind of want to talk about here. But the petitioner proposed an R8A zoning. It eventually went to planning commission, as it normally does for these kinds of things, for a recommendation, and then also DID staff kind of puts their own recommendation forward. Because the R8A zoning is, it allows for apartments in a zone that we designate as part of our comp plan as low-density, we decided that that wasn't appropriate, so we proposed the R10S zoning. Upon planning commission, the meeting of planning commission, they proposed R10A, which is a third different zoning, so there's now three zones on the table for this annexation. And I guess, as typically with annexations, they do come to this second work session for you guys to approve and move it forward to legislation. But we kind of want to know how to proceed, what zone to pick, because there's now three on the table, and there's, seems to be, I don't know, a little bit of contention here.
What did the, so, okay, this, what did the, what did the planning commission recommend?
They recommended R10A.
And staff said what to that recommendation?
We, we just, we recommended R10S. We didn't really have a...
In you, in layman's terms, and I'm speaking, because again, we just had a question about this, now council, you're asking council to weigh in, in very layman's terms, explain the difference between 10S and 10A.
Sure, sure. So the R10A, so the 10 is 10,000 square foot minimum. The A allows for apartments and townhomes. The regular R10 that we have doesn't allow for apartments and townhomes, okay? The S allows for what's called cluster development, which you still have the same 10,000 square foot lot minimum, but it allows, it allows for you to take a piece of that 10,000 square foot and allocate it to open space, making the lot size that you actually build the home on smaller. So making it so that you can put the homes, kind of cluster them in a smaller area, and the rest of the space is reserved for...
Typically became, typically it would just be the R10. The biggest distinction is single-family versus allowing townhouses and apartments. You'd recommend the single-family, because that's what the neighboring community is. The 10S, the S aspect is kind of a little scheme that exists in the code, like he was saying, to let them bunch together more. It was something we recommended as a way to give a little bit more density and more units. This particular parcel has a utility easement across it, overhead power lines that can't be built underneath, so allowing this special S clustering lets the developer in a prospective development put the houses a little closer together, not underneath that line, to achieve some of what they're looking for with the higher number of units. It's kind of compromise situation while maintaining the single-family integrity of the neighborhood.
Before we get too far into this, I'd like to hear council's thoughts, only because, again, I don't, this is the first time since I've been on council that council's been asked to make a determination on the zoning, the zoning district for a development after it's already gone to planning commission. I really want to hear council's thoughts on this, on even making that decision. Council, want to show?
I could also jump in for a point of clarity.
Yes.
Because the development itself didn't go before the planning commission. The proposed zoning of the land, so that would be a second step that happens, so it's a...
But doesn't it normally, okay?
And, but you are right. Typically, the recommendation from the planning commission on the zoning of an annexed property parcel would be sort of put forth. We did check with the legal council if that had to be put forth, and if that zoning from the planning commission's recommendation had to be what the council went forward with, and they said no, because the council is the arbiter and the ones who really ultimately get to pick.
I'm just wondering why we're deviating from the normal course of action here. I just, I'm seeing, I'm not seeing this, this panel. And again, in a previous, more contentious discussions, council has, again, it's been brought to my attention to say, "Council, President Doughty, go with what council normally does," and now we're, it looks like we're deviating. I'm sorry, again, it's...
And that is an option. That's why we want to present all three options, and if council just thinks it's easiest and makes most sense to go with the planning.
I'm going to be the cog in the wheel. We had talked about creating guidelines for tiering requirements for developers to include affordable housing in their developments. That has not come to the, you know, surface yet. I think before we talk about any annexing, that we need to clarify what we're expecting from... from the developers. With that said, regardless if it's an RS, or a single-family, you have to consider that, yes, but I think we have to, I got tricked, and that's, I'm not being facetious, when we talked about annexing a portion of West Road. And my concern was that once you say, okay, this is annexed, we have no control over what goes there. I mean, obviously, the codes determine, you know, the R10S, the R10A, that I am much more comfortable making sense of this, where we have something in place in writing requiring some type of affordable housing to be a percentage of any new developer coming in and doing anything, and then we can talk about annexing. That's just my feeling about this.
Agreed.
But it doesn't, and so I think that's, that's a point, but that still doesn't get to the, of are we weighing in?
President Doughty, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, I, really, we're gonna have to break this down to another step. So, is this about, we're, we're talking about annexing. So, that's different than the coding, which is historically done through the planning commission. So, we're not the planning commission, right? But we do give approval on annexation. Is that, am I, so it sounds like we're doing...
Code is needed to find, yeah.
Well, as the coding as it's already defined, but that's planning commission, I think we're being asked to do a couple different things here, and out of order, it sounds like, or feels like. Help me out.
I mean, administration, do you wanna weigh in and give some guidance? The reason why, and I'm taking some steps, because again, this normally comes to us, and now, once we start walking some lines, we're gonna start having some really lengthy discussions, which is fine, but we're talking about what we're requiring into, for annexation, et cetera, you know, with zoning districts, again, we're, we look forward, we look to the qualified individuals, and then on the recommendation from planning commissions, to, with the guidance from the qualified individuals, you staff, and then bringing it to us. And it feels like we're, in administration, do you have any thoughts on this, or I just wanna make sure that we, as council, are making the advised, informed decision on this?
I don't think you're necessarily out of order, it's just that this is a little unusual. All we're asking for right now is a decision on the type of zoning. We're talking a little bit about a potential project that we might, would allow this S classification for, to provide a little bit more density, which is sort of a side conversation. If you also, if you pull this thing apart, really what we're trying to decide first is what the zoning classification would be. And the conversation for later would be what the project would look like. And with regard to the affordable housing piece, I do wanna make sure that the council is aware that the mayor has scheduled a meeting with the county to talk about affordable housing options, and then from there, we might want to set up a task force, work group, what have you, to incorporate some of these affordable housing requests that the council has put forward. So, we don't have a model yet, but we are meeting and working on it.
Yes, that's why I wanna make sure we stick on the one, because again, once we start expanding, we'll get away from the initial, the ask, which is the zoning district, which you explained, Mr. White, thank you for that, the 10S versus 10A. But why was that, why are you all...
So, because the planning commission recommended something that isn't in line with what's written in our comprehensive plan, so we think that's...
And the way that the code is written, again, we looked at it carefully, checked with the legal council, and it's not a final say from the planning commission, it's a recommendation. We're also professional staff, like they are, and are giving our alternative that we think is more in line. And we're trying to get that as an early feedback from you before we go through the expense of drafting the legislation and finalizing the package, so that it doesn't maybe change afterwards.
How soon do we need to make this decision?
I don't think we need to make it right away.
Okay, and I don't think we do either. I think it should be tabled, and I think it should be going to another work session with more clarification.
Yeah, I think that's just, it's just, I think we're all confused here, because again, this is out of...
We need more clarification.
Yeah, I think most typically, the recommendations from the planning commission aligns with what staff has recommended, and what the developer wanted. In this odd case, we have three different cases, so we like the idea of presenting what the developer wanted, and having his say heard, same thing with ours, and it's such a big change, it's not just, you know, a couple unit difference, it's a dramatic difference in terms of this type of housing, apartments versus this type of housing, single-family only, so it's such a dramatic change, we thought we would present both of the options.
And Nick, I heard what you said when you said what the developer wants. And I understand what I'm just getting ready to say, no, no harm to you, it's just not meant for you. I am tired of developers coming in here and doing what they want to do in our city and in our county. The same way this young lady got up and spoke about Pemberton, and all the stuff that's going on over there, where they're changing hands and changing hands, and we've got to do something about this. Because if we don't, just like she said, there's more homeless people than anything here in Salisbury, and I wanna make sure that even with the zoning, that we're careful about what we're doing. Secondly, I want to make sure that these people know that we want, not need, we want affordable housing. They come in here and they do what they want, they leave, go back to the states that they come from, they don't care about how we live, or how our people in the city of Salisbury live, and I think that we should hold their feet to the fire. I'm just, you know, no, we need, actually, why can't we have a conversation with the developers?
If you can, 100%.
Huh?
That's the developer. I would love to talk about it, because actually, everything is not being proposed clearly and accurately to...
And I have a question about that.
And that's why I said we need more clarification.
That's a disservice for the city, and also for the people that live here their whole entire life.
Yes, and I wanna be careful, because again, normally we don't engage, but I, and this is where, we don't, and I'm taking a sidestep, where it's, it's not council making a decision without having the facts, and we're just asked, and that puts us in the point, and again, what's gonna happen?
Need more clarification.
We're gonna make a decision, and we're gonna get so much heat, because we're not the informed, collectively, that it's gotten us, I know council has had it for a while, if you know my...
Okay, so, right now, the land is in the county, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, the county has different planning and zoning than Salisbury? Correct? Or what they wanna do? Correct? Yes?
Classification.
It's different, they're classification.
Yeah, they're zoning, yes.
So, how can the city do anything about this property, or decide what to do with it if it's not even in the city? So, the annexation seems like that's the first piece. So, I do think we need a lot more information on this, because it seems like this is totally out of order.
Process-wise, those do go together, as a property gets annexed, it has a zoning that it exists with as it gets annexed, so that's part of the state process through Maryland planning.
I think the tabling is, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, and I think that we would like to invite the developer for a full presentation.
City clerk is getting the information for the developer.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so, thank you all for this, we're gonna table this discussion point here. I'm sorry, Mayor, you had a point.
Yeah, we're just gonna make a final point, as I understood the situation, and I've spoken to Brian. His proposal was for a townhouse, which is actually an affordable product. The neighborhood felt a single-family is more appropriate, so the compromise was the hybrid. So, it's sort of like, I think what Brian's frustrating with, frustrated with, I think we all frustrated with, is this sort of, we all have the same goal, but we seem to not be able to stay in the same room and kind of balance out what's really, you know, the end of the, so, that's all, you know, I think it's everybody's trying to do the right thing, but getting there is a problem.
Well, that's why we need to speak to the developer.
Yeah, because normally, that's worked out before, it's just council, I think that's where we're kind of, and this is not the arena, we don't have the time, so, let's, if we need to have that discussion, we can put it on, and we're gonna allocate time, but this is, this is not...
I can quickly echo, the developer's not proposing building apartments, the zoning would allow for apartments to be built, that might have not been clear.
Well, let's, let's not make any more...
That would be different than initially.
Yes, and let's not make any more, let's just, let's just table this discussion, we'll have information, then we'll go from there. Does it tie in with the next item, or are those...
Excuse me, could you do a motion in a second to...
Table it.
Yes, or I can just say, we don't have consensus to move, if I say, we don't have consensus to move forward, does that, does this item...
You have to make a motion.
Okay, I'll intune a motion to table the, well, the actual annexation decision for the North Shoemaker Drive. Any question?
Just a move.
Second?
All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very none, Chair, Chair approves, thank you, City Clerk. Do the following item, does it tie in, or can we discuss that?
No, it's a different...
It's different, okay. We'll go to you.
Cool, okay. So, for this, it's Shoemaker Landing Management LLC is requesting the annexation of parcel number 184, located along the northerly right-of-way line of Shoemaker Drive, approximately 1,700 feet west of Beaglin Park Drive, as identified on Wycomico County Tax Map Number 38, and the attacks, and the attached annexation plat. The total annexation area is 7.58 acres and consists entirely of the parcel's land. The development proposed is for five three-story apartment buildings with a total of 132 dwelling units for a density of 17.4 units per acre. The plan provided also shows a small dog park and a tot lot. The property is currently zoned R8 residential in Wycomico County, and upon annexation, the petitioner requested zoning designation of planned residential development in order to achieve a maximum density of 20 units per acre. The city's most dense district is R5A, which allows 12 units per acre generally. The petitioner has met with city staff to discuss whether a PRD is appropriate, and to discuss other options, as staff believes the development proposed is not consistent with the definition of a PRD as written in the code. Section 17, 122010 of the code states that the purpose of a PRD is to provide "the maximum choice in type of living environment and living accommodation by encouraging a variety of housing styles, open space, and recreational areas. A PRD should also preserve the natural environment and be flexible enough to respond to market demands. This PRD, this PRD as proposed does not appear to effectively meet these terms, and staff feels the applicant should either seek out a more, seek out an existing residential zone, or else propose significant more, significantly more elements that would lead to a PRD more consistent with the code's intention. Staff looks forward to continuing work with the applicant if it wishes to continue to move forward with the annexation. Authorization has been granted by the property owners to pursue annexation, and all required fees and documentation will be provided."
Also, do you have anything else?
Topically, this one's not at the later stage of the last one was, this is just the introduction, which we've been kind of sharing with you guys recently, for when they come in, but it might have similar issues down the line, that's something we identified early on. They're looking, instead of selecting a zoning like happened with the last one with the R8A, I think it was, they now are proposing a planned residential district-type zoning. And we're just kind of pointing out that that's not quite the right application for that, as far as we understand the code. And we're, you know, happy to continue processing it, forwarding it to the planning commission once that's up and running, to, again, get to the stage that we're at with the next one, in terms of their recommendation, our recommendation, we're just sharing that all with you guys. This one's basically to the south, across the pond, across the park. This, yeah, this one is located on the other side of Shoemaker Drive, so this is close to like the YMCA.
So, what is the, if not the PRD, then what's the recommendation?
So, it's gonna, we'd have to look at that in terms of they're proposing fairly dense apartments, denser than are allowed in any other part of the code. So, if we want to try to match as closely as possible what the developer was looking for, the densest possible would be, what, R5A? We haven't gotten to the point of making that recommendation, because we're, again, at this earlier stage, but we're just kind of introducing the project to you guys, and we will go through the process with the planning commission, but we don't have that recommendation right now.
Are these the same developers?
Well, I don't believe...
No.
No.
I'd like to ask for a presentation on this, too, while we're at it.
Yeah. Because we can't continue, keep letting people come in here, Bill.
Sounds like you have some suggested orders, and we're not, but we appreciate a presentation and a little more insight on that. Hopefully, can you, if we can bring those two back at the same time, that may be good, that way we can refresh this back in our memory. And we're not, we aren't deciding anything for this one.
This one we weren't looking for.
Okay. Counsel, if, again, any final questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you both for this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I saw, yep. We'll invite Captain Phelps for an ordinance on abandonment of a portion of property known as Burton Street. Mr. Phelps, before you start on this, can you just refresh, I know we talked about, we've talked about Burton Street a time or two, or three, and we've actually, we did...
Yeah, we did something.
Yeah, we, so, can you just make sure that we're, you know, just for the timeline and for the public?
Yes, I believe what you're referring, Captain John Phelps, with the Salisbury Police Department, I believe what you're referring to is us acquiring property on the other side.
Oh, the court, okay, okay, okay.
That was, in fact, acquired, now is owned by the city. That's what brings us here, to kind of terminate this portion of Burton Street, so that we can close that off.
Okay. You got it.
Good evening. I'm here to present the proposed ordinance for the abandonment and closure of a portion of Burton Street located east of Delaware Avenue, with the municipal boundaries of the city of Salisbury. This request is made under section SC 11-2 of the charter, which grants the city exclusive authority over all public ways with the city limits, within the city limits. The section of Burton Street proposed for abandonment runs from Delaware Avenue to its terminus, and encompasses approximately 14,047 square feet, as identified on the attached plan site. Did you guys take a look at it? This portion of roadway has not been used for public ingress or egress for many years now, it's actually fenced off at the back end of the Save-A-Lot parking lot, the only thing it's used for is ingress and egress to the police department at this point. We've had a couple of issues, namely with people accosting some of our civilian employees in the middle of the night when they're going to their vehicles. We're trying to find a way to kind of secure that more, and we think the best way to do that is to terminate this portion of that section of Burton Street.
So, is it gonna be fenced off?
Yeah, the plan is, down the line, to fence that entire thing, all secure it up near Delaware Avenue, and make that part of the imprint of the police department itself, with looking forward, putting some type of building maybe across on the property that we just got, so that we can house some of our vehicles and different things that are in different locations throughout the city at this point.
Instead of the abandoned vehicles that are there now?
Eyesore.
They're getting ready to go.
Eyesore.
Yes, thank you.
It's a safety issue.
We should have had two more this evening, I think.
Yeah, we did, we declared a surplus.
We were waiting on those two to get them all...
That's why I was saying the fencing, please, because one thing I can't stand is a mess. I cannot, and it's, I mean, it's all over the city, but in my district, no, uh-uh. I want it fenced off and looking like something.
Now, that does a butt to the property of Opportunity Street LLC, which is, I guess, the Salisbury Plaza Shopping Center, where the Save-A-Lot is. Representative from there has, in fact, been contacted, they have no issues with us terminating that, they've never used it in years, so, they were actually instrumental in us risking the property across the street as well, so...
Huge safety issue.
Yeah, we have had some issues, again, unfortunately, we had the gentleman that came in there, actually, you know, shot himself in the back lot, he had availability to get into the lot there, so, that was another one of the reasons we wanna make sure that we get this secured.
It sounds like we're gonna have consensus to move it forward.
Yes, we are. We are.
We're gonna have consensus to move it forward, that's what it sounds like.
Yes.
Which I'm glad it's, it's coming to a resolve, because we've had, we've had many conversations about it. It sounds like we have a consensus to move it forward. President Doughty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Captain Phelps. Did we get the cleanup situation? I know we...
Yeah, we got it.
Good, good, okay. I appreciate that. All right. Moving forward, we will turn our attention to, there she is, Finance Director Sandy Green, on ordinance to correct, correct ordinance 2883 with the Truitt Street Center, Community Center expansion. Director Green?
Sandy Green, Finance Director. Okay, mine should be easy. Attached is an ordinance to correct the funding error in ordinance number 2883 with the financing of the Truitt Street Community Center Expansion Project. Originally, in ordinance 2883, we had moved 55, 325 from interest revenue that was earned on bond... on bond proceeds. However, it's been determined that that project was not initially in that bond, so we can't use interest from that bond since it was not in that particular bond pool. So an easy fix for this is just asking to reallocate $55,325 from the city's general fund interest instead.
Thank you. I was going to ask you to make sure you thoroughly, because when you say finance, or I forget the word you said, but when we say an error, it can raise some alarm bells there, so thank you for underscoring what we're doing here. Counsel, any questions about the particular clerical fix?
No.
Okay. Consensus to move forward? Yes? Director Green, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes. All right. Moving forward to some council discussions. First, we have the reps for our boards and commissions. This is an open discussion. Again, if anyone, I know we had a swap, so we'll record that for the record. Anyone else wishing to change, move, any boards and commissions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to be on the truth because it's conflicting with the YDAC.
Okay.
So I don't get to, I can't manipulate myself enough to go at both, so I'll just take the YDAC and continue to do Parks Commission.
Then Councilwoman Jackson and I switched out for the youth development advisory board because it meets on Wednesday nights, and I don't, I work on Wednesday nights, so we weren't actually able to switch. I wasn't able to pick up on something else that you were going to do because it was a Wednesday night one.
I'm Wycomico reconciliation.
Just for Ms. English there, YDAC, Ms. Councilwoman.
Jackson has that now.
Is taking that. Truth, Council Vice President is taking that.
No, she's not.
Oh, no?
She can't do it either.
Oh, when does YDAC meet? When does Truth meet?
That's on a Wednesday now. I think they changed to Wednesday. So that's what the conflict was. Because we just had a YDAC and I feel kind of odd just spinning out on it, going to another one, rushing, you know, when I'm new to the YDAC, you know what I'm saying? So I need to be there.
Oh, is that the one that's?
And you know how I am about the youth, so.
Okay, so all of these committees are meeting on Wednesdays, it seems.
Yes.
And that's rough.
Yeah, okay. So which Wednesday of the month is YDAC meeting on?
City Clerk is trying to figure that out.
When was our last, was it the second? Was it the second Wednesday?
Seventeenth of September.
Last Wednesday. That's the third?
Third. Mm-hmm.
While we're figuring that out, I know that Tri-County Council, we still don't have a city rep spot open for that one, do we?
It says no rep available.
I know. I think we can't.
What day is that?
What is that? It's every so often that space comes open and we have to let them know in advance that we're interested.
Okay. Because that's a good one. I think we don't have any city representation on that one.
I'm happy to take that.
Well, I was going to, yeah, because I don't have, you know, I don't have Planning Commission now, so I was going to suggest taking the Tri-County Council if we can get that one. If you don't mind, Council position, okay?
I'm done.
I feel like I should take, you know, I want to take one or two. Okay, we need to figure that out, that Truth one, because that Wednesday time slot.
Yeah, that Wednesday is tough for me. Because I have another one that's on. So when does the one, the Wycomico Truth and Reconciliation?
The third Wednesday of the month.
Wonder Woman over here.
Yes, you have, it's when you and Councilwoman Gregory have.
Wonder Woman.
We appreciate your flag.
I'm just trying, I would have no Wednesdays available at that point.
We can leave it blank for now until we figure that out, but I definitely, I just wanted to get on the record about the switch that you all can continue doing that. And then we'll take, planning is on, we won't have a council representative on there anymore. And then Clerk English, if you can put me next to Tri-County Council and ask if we can get that city representative slot back there?
I think it needs to be filled. I mean, I don't think you need them open. So the Wycomico Truth and Reconciliation is the one that's open?
Yes.
And they meet Wednesdays?
Third.
Third Wednesday? Who am I talking to? Joe? Yes, okay.
Third Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. You'll keep me straight, Joe. Okay.
Your neighbors.
Okay. Sure. I'll take it because I think they all need to be filled.
Man, our next council proclamation is going to be for Councilwoman DeShiel, for and Councilwoman Gregory. All right, anything else, any other changes? No? Man, that's the easiest item on the, all right, thank you, counsel. Ms. English, did you capture everything there?
I believe so. Do you mind if I just go to?
Just go down each one.
Say what each one I have on record is. Planning and zoning commission, I have President Doughty.
It's going to be, we don't have a council representative anymore.
Town gown. President Doughty. I don't know how you swim.
Salisbury, Wycomico Metropolitan Planning.
That one. I have Ms. DeShiel. Zoo commission, I have Gregory. Truth now, I have DeShiel. Parks and Rec, I have Jackson. YDAC, I have Jackson. BPAC, Blake. HREC, Blake. Library Committee, I have Gregory. DAC, Disability Advisory, I have Gregory. Sustainability, I have Gregory. Airport, I have DeShiel. PAC 14, I have DeShiel. And Tri-County, I have Doughty. Correct?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. English. All right. Next, we'll, the Immigration and Nationality Act, 287G program. Again, this was an item that was added, some few questions and concerns from the public. Counsel bring this forward, just looking to administration to provide some clarity. And just to underscore, now, there was some questions asked about why there's no documentation. Can counsel learn about this as well from?
Just to interrupt for a second, it was brought to my attention that the Public Art Committee is not listed, so I'd like to add that.
Thank you. Oh, and that's, that's, Councilwoman Gregory, thank you to whomever.
That was Mr. Swagger over here.
Thank you. Oh, H, A, B, C, D. Okay. Is that counsel is learning in the public, the same way, there's no documentation that we have to put on the agenda, so again, there was nothing to add there, no MOUs, nothing of the sort, so that's why it's added as a discussion point, but more so, of course, to make the public and counsel where on the same page and so that administration can kind of explain the release. And I think it'd just be good to, unless you all want to do it, kind of read a little bit of piece of the press release, if you'll mind, so that the.
I wasn't going to read the press release.
I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay, well, I can, yeah, I can. So just so everyone, again, the City of Salisbury intent to cooperate with Wycomico County on 287G program, so the City of Salisbury and the Salisbury Police Department intend to cooperate with the efforts of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office to assist in the removal of incarcerated individuals who are found not to have legal status in this country. There's a quote from our chief there, and then explains the program. U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement has information about the 287G program on its website. It states the illegal immigration reform and immigrant responsibility act of 1966, added section 287G to the Immigration and Nationality Act, INA, authorizing U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, to delegate the state and local law enforcement officers the authority to perform specified immigration officer functions under the agency's direction and oversight. And, yeah. We'll take it from there. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, just for backdrop, this Wednesday, we're getting together for another meeting to have a broader conversation, but I think our comments, or at least the mayor's office comments relative to the 287G status was purely from a safety perspective. I mean, you know, as I understood it, and how I'm looking to contribute from the perspective of anything we could do, is if we have individuals who are here that, whatever agreement we arrive at, who have administrative or judicial warrants, that we would be in a position to help get them and have ICE deal with that situation. I think that's just out of function of safety. No one is looking to, you know, knock down doors or administrator warrants or anything like that. It's just that course of action where we're trying to sort out where there are folks here that are, have either created active criminal activity while they're here and have judicial administrative warrants. That was my perspective, and to the extent that we could support the county in their 287G agreement, whatever that arrives at, and they haven't gotten one either, that's how we were looking to participate. And I don't think anybody could find fault with trying to get people that are actively involved in criminal activity.
Well, Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know which one of you young men said it, but we already have things in place for that.
What's like what?
For immigration, if they have a crime or they commit a crime.
That's not the way it works.
Yes, we do.
Well, in other words, are police officers right now with any kind of, go ahead?
Let the county deal with it. If they want to deal with, let the county deal with it. I don't think that we should be put in the middle of something. We've not even had a discussion with the chief, really.
Oh, I have.
Find out what you may have, but we need to too.
All right.
We need to too, but we don't, I don't think, I don't know how nobody feels, but I just feel that we're getting ourselves in something. We say we don't have enough police officers to do the job they need to do, and then we want to give them another job.
We're not giving them another job. This is a normal course of action that we.
But we already have something.
No, we don't.
Okay, wait a minute, hold it. If we were to go and, this man commits a crime, or whoever, you take him, find out he's from Haiti.
Yeah.
Okay, and he's committed a crime, and he has a criminal record, and he's committed something over there in Haiti, then they're going to take him to immigration at Wycomico County Detention Center, and then they're going to deport him or give him a trial and let him.
Well, presently, presently, okay, you're going to listen?
Wait a minute.
Presently, presently, we can't check that status. That's part of the arrangement. So in other words, we can't check whether they're legal or whether they've got a criminal.
I'm going to step in. Let's just make sure that, again, we're talking about things that are very heated. Let's make sure, again, because I think Councilwoman Jackson found some contention in that.
I didn't mean it like that. What I was trying to say, what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to say is that our police officers in the city's limits cannot do that presently without some sort of an agreement.
So, and I think.
That's not true.
Now, if we arrest the person and take them to the jail.
Yes.
Then they can check them for those warrants.
But that's all you got to do anyway.
No, but.
So let me provide some context. I think that's where.
No, let me finish. Hold on, let me finish.
Okay.
So let me give you an example. We pull someone over for a stoplight, for a headlight, okay? And this guy could be, you know, some sort of, you know, have multiple warrants out. We would not know that, and it's certainly not an arrestable offense to have a headlight out. My point is, is that it's another tool in the toolbox to try and hopefully make communities safer. You can disagree with that, but that's just, you know, basic police work.
So I think where, and this is where confusion came with, again, reading the release and then it look, it appears, I mean, it says, City of Salisbury intent to cooperate with Wycomico County on 287G program. That, I mean, it literally did, it brought some fear and some angst in people, so I think, and I just so happen to have had a meeting with some staff members from the White House, and I asked them, I just said, hey, I got this release, what happens? Because I have no information, I'm getting calls, texts, emails. They said honestly that localities can't even, or are not even, there is no direct or MOU, nothing that we would have on record. So I think that's where Councilwoman Jackson is saying, we didn't even have to send this release out and get people all worried about because we cannot aid in.
What happened?
Mayor, give me one, give me one second. We cannot even aid in Wycomico County right now. There's nothing our officers can do at this present moment, again, the federal, that's, but at the present moment, there's nothing we can do to aid in this program. So this messaging, we shouldn't have sent it out. I mean, that's just the bear.
So let me respond to that. So the county was announced what they were planning on engaging in. We were asked where we were, and all we were simply saying was, we would support the county and whatever, and then everybody took it from there. We would support them in whatever they're trying.
We can't support them. How can we support them?
Do what they're doing.
I have several questions.
Okay.
President.
What does that mean? What does supporting your mind mean?
I have several questions.
Cheerleader? I mean, what I'm saying is, we'd be supportive of them trying to do, get criminals off the street, and that's what I was basically saying.
The City of Salisbury Law Enforcement will certainly cooperate with our county law enforcement partners with any and all agreements as we aid to comply with federal law. That's what you said. So I'm just wondering, again, where is that support? This could have been an email. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because, again, we have nothing on record, we have no documentation, and people are literally scared right now. And so why did we even send this out? When I asked White House staff, can this even happen? They're like.
White House staff?
The federal government, I asked staff members, hey, I got a press release about this, President of the Council, they said that you can't even do that. You have no, you cannot sign an MOU. The counties can, but you cannot do that.
Municipals can enter, but we're not planning on doing it, I'm just saying.
Yes, Council Vice President.
President Doughty, I have several questions. Okay. First of all, did you consult with Sheriff Lewis about this?
Yes.
Okay. Did you consult with the county executive about this?
Yes.
Okay. So you had a meeting with both of them?
No, we had discussions about what they were thinking, where their thinking was, what their.
Okay, so you had discussions with them, and was, and did you all agree that the city was going to then participate with their program or plan or whatever?
They were still much in the planning stages of discussion, so.
So we don't even.
So Wednesday, we're getting together.
Hold on, sir. Hold on, please. So basically, they're still in the process of discussing what they're going to do, but we agreed to do what you believed they were going to do. They don't even have it anchored out themselves, but we agreed to participate in something. They don't even have it anchored out. I'm not done speaking, please. I'm not done, thank you. So I just wanted to make that clear. So we don't have an MOU, and let me understand this. What, so you're saying basically that there's a process? And what I understand from our prior conversation earlier this week, and what I understand you to say this evening, is that the process is that if somebody commits a crime, that we help the sheriff's department find the warrant and then get ICE involved? Now, or whatever the process is in your mind, do we have that process written out anywhere? And does the, do our policemen know about this process? Was there a training about it? Was there, is there additional time? Is there monies being requested for this?
No.
Okay. So did you consult the city's legal team about if you could even apply for or implement 287G without a change of the city charter? Did you consult our legal team before you sent out this?
We did consult the legal team, and we don't need to change the charter. It's U.S. law, federal law. So let me finish what you were saying.
Ms. Boucher.
My reaction.
Is that accurate? What's our process as far as the 287G? I'm just asking, I don't know what I don't know. You may know differently, he may be, I think we just need answers. Is that accurate with Mayor Taylor is saying?
A couple of things. There are a number of models for the 287G. The county model, we would not be eligible because the city doesn't have a detention center. If the city wanted to enter into a field operations model, a different model, different agreement, I've not actually seen the agreement or reviewed it. agreement, I've not actually seen the agreement or reviewed it. I think you looked to our charter to see whether we could do that, and I, I don't believe per our charter that we could enter into a 287G as a city.
Okay, now, Ms. Boucher, again, did, was there, before this press release, was there a conversation between the administration team, any one of them, mayor, anybody from the administration, and our legal department, any one of the legal department about this before that press release went out?
That was me.
Okay. Was anyone else that you know of in the legal department?
I can't speak for Heather and Laura, but I don't know.
So, and then when, when the press, when the, when Mayor Taylor sent out his press release, a lot of people were having a lot of questions. They were asking us. Our phones were ringing off the hook. And so, again, again, explain how any of this came about with all of these gaps to fill.
So a couple of things. The intent was never to say we were going to end run and to sign a 287G agreement. We said we would be supportive of what the county was trying to do, and the backdrop of that was we were going to get criminals that are, that are here, that have administrative and judicial warrants off the street. I thought that was a positive thing. I hope you think the same. I've had many, many responses, "That's a very, very good thing." And that's all we were really trying to say is, and so, you know, instead of calling the administration, some went to the media and had conversations that I didn't have with other people. I think we're trying to have a cooperative relationship with a situation which is somewhat challenging. And so we realized it's supercharged. At the end of the day, that was the intent of the, of the solicitation, to say, "Listen, we're supportive of getting bad guys off the street, and to the extent that we can help, we will."
I do want to acknowledge again, for changing the initial photo that was attached to the Facebook. That was the, the one with the flag with the handcuffs.
That was an error.
That wasn't, that was, we, thank you for changing that.
Yeah, well, that was my doing, but I got it.
I know, but I'm just, I have to publicly, only because I felt it, I have to say it. That was, that we shouldn't, that, that brings, that also adds to, to the, the tone. Again, people, I'm, it's, it just brings about the tone that we're going to be out there.
Touch on something here.
Yes.
I want to go back to the discussion about the fear that this instilled in the community.
Councilman Gregory, can you speak into that?
Sorry. I want to talk again about the fear that this instilled in the community because the gentleman over here who's sitting in the audience here who committed a public comment, he said, you know, "If you look at him, do you know his status? If I were not sitting up here, if you look at me, would you know my status?" No, you wouldn't. You wouldn't know that I'm the daughter of an immigrant. You wouldn't know that my father came here in 1964. You would not know that I am the only child, including the, the, my younger sister, who was born in the United States. My sister was actually born overseas. When we moved back here, my father didn't file the proper paperwork. She was undocumented for the majority of her adult life until I put, I had to put him in a nursing home for his care, and I was going through all of his boxes and boxes of paperwork, and I found her documentation. She was undocumented until she was well into her 30s. So when I hear something like this, it's very deeply personal to me. That, I still have that nervous feeling for my sister. She looks somewhat like me, not entirely. I'm the only redhead in the family, but, you know, I, that fear that folks are feeling out there right now is the fear that I felt in the pit of my stomach when I started getting text messages while I'm sitting in a hospital room with my son from community members who are reaching out and scared to death for their friends and loved ones because our mayor has sent out this press release without any prior notification, without any prior discussion, without any kind of preamble. And I think at the very least, regardless of what this council decides to do, whatever is, whatever the, the, the law says we can do or are able to do, whatever happens, I think the mayor at least owes the community an apology for striking fear into the community because that is something that is just so primal when you have lived with that fear for so long.
I'm not even sure how to respond to that. I mean, listen, I'm the mayor. I have the administration. The police chief answers to me. What I'm saying is, we want to get dangerous criminals off the street, and that was what my motivation was. That's the backdrop of what the county's program is. This isn't about illegal immigration as a, as a broad brush. This is about people that we believe to be dangerous people that are, and that's what this is all, the 287G is about.
Sure. Well, I think you're hearing.
That's all I'm going to say about that topic.
I think you're hearing from the council that, again, we, we, as, as a majority oppose it, we're going to, we're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, what we can to make sure that it doesn't continue, so.
I, I don't think that the majority of people would see that as a bad idea. I think they'd see it as a very much mainstream idea, so.
The majority of the council, the, well, first of all, we can't do it according to our legal team.
People with judicial administrative warrants off the street?
No. According to our, according to our legal team and according to the majority of the council, the Salisbury City Council is, just because it comes from the mayor's office doesn't mean it, it comes from us.
That's true.
It would be no. We would not change our charter for this. We were not going to allocate additional funds for our, our police. Our police already do a very good job getting dangerous criminals off the street, and so does the sheriff's department. How they run their sheriff's department is how they run their sheriff's department. Any program that would use anything of 287G is not representative of the citizens and the residents here of Salisbury, and it would be, it would, it would die at the presentation. So the answer would be no from us.
Council, any other comments?
Uh-uh. I'm just, have we had, have you mayor had an in-depth conversation with the police department?
Yes.
Because I feel like we have enough trouble with staffing our police department, and we just don't need some extra curricular activity going on when we need people, we need officers somewhere else. And like I said before, I've been here, and I am 67 years old, and I've been here majority of my life. My mother worked at the detention center as a correction officer, and I know, and I know plenty of people who work at the, at the Nellie Mill Road, and there's always been an immigration department, and anybody that they needed to send back, they sent them back? How did they know to send them back? Somebody had to tell them. So they're getting the information from somewhere because I know quite a few people who were sent back to their, to their native country. So I don't think that, we're, I'm, I'm just like this gentleman. We're blowing stuff out of proportion. I don't believe in illegal, I'm going to say it, illegal immigrants. I don't believe in it. If you're going to come here, make yourself legal. Make yourself legal. If you have committed a crime in your country, then you need to pay for it. If you commit a crime in our country, you need to pay. That's the bottom line. But we don't need all this extra stuff going on, and like you said, a fear factor to people. We don't need it. We don't need it. I mean, you know, Mike Lewis can do what he wants, Wycomico County Sheriff's Department, and I have nothing against Mike Lewis at all, so don't even take this personally, nobody. But let him do what he thinks he needs to do, and let us stay out of it. We need to stay out of this. We need to definitely stay out of it. I don't care how anybody feels. We need to stay out of this. We need to be the, the neutral, you know? We don't have anywhere to put them if we do lock them up, but the county does. They have somewhere for them. We don't have that facility. And the county goes all around. I see them everywhere. So the county is all in the city of Salisbury and Wycomico County. So Maradella, every, they, they can encompass places that the city can't encompass. So let them do the job, if that's what they want. I don't, I just don't agree. And, you know, I want no hard feelings here. I want people to understand where I'm coming from and where we're coming from as a council. I just don't agree with us getting involved in this.
Thank you all. Moving on, if no further comments. Lot 10 subrecipient agreement. I'm going to ask Legal if you want to bring us up to speed, kind of where we were, and it's been a few months where we ended off, kind of what brought us to having this agreement here, and our charge, and then next steps.
At the last work session, there was a discussion for a draft of the lot 10. I was not here for that discussion. My partner Heather Conyer was. Pursuant to, I believe, the instructions that was given to Ms. Conyer at that meeting to try to work with the administration and also Mentis' attorney to further refine a subrecipient agreement, and so that's what now is before you. A revised finalized subrecipient agreement for discussion, questions?
For the public's ease and also for council's ease, do you mind just highlighting, again, the, the spots that were filled, the, just again, that this wasn't brought from scratch, but that there's a template and then there are items that we.
And yes.
That we fill in as a city.
The subrecipient agreement in large part tracks our form subrecipient agreement. The differences would be the whereas clauses specific to this project. There may be some minor tweaks here or there within the agreement. The biggest piece, I think, is the Exhibit B, which is the dispersment schedule. And I think this is, I'm not sure what version was before you when you last spoke about it in July, but this is the proposed dispersment schedule, and that's Page 65 of the agenda.
Thank you. And you, Legal, have spoke with the potential developers, Legal?
Ms. Conyer, yes, has spoken with developers.
And she is, this is something that she's in agreement with, and she, you know, is proposing, and it's, the eyes are dialed.
Yes, before you tonight, yes, for discussion questions, and then it would determine whether there would be consensus to move forward with this subrecipient agreement.
So that you would say, and I'm, I'm just asking you a question to make sure that we are walking this rope and that we're making the decisions from here on out. You would say that's probably the, the biggest and largest task for us to make sure that we are okay with Page 65?
Correct.
The dispersment schedule, and then we would move forward. Counsel?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Counsel, Page 65, the dispersment schedule. Let's make sure that we, if we have any questions about this.
I just want to go over the record that I didn't realize this agreement that was being put. I thought we were just having a discussion about the, the status of the lawsuit, not the, the sort of the agreement. I'm not in agreement with any of this.
Counsel, discussion, lot 10 subrecipient agreement. It's.
We don't even have a project. I mean, how we can even.
It says it might only agenda.
Yeah, I don't know.
It says lot 10 subrecipient, yeah, that's what it says.
Discussion, but.
Yeah.
For discussion.
We are. We're discussing it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
So are you in agreement with?
Yeah, I mean, we don't even have a project with which we could even have a comprehensive conversation.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the problem. That's been the problem.
Well, the, the rest, okay.
Counsel, let's go back to counsel. Your, your thoughts on the dispersment schedule? Let's see, there's four draw periods, land acquisition, site pre-dev, construction, and construction completion. And let's, I just want to underscore again, no monies can be reimbursed to any developer without receipts, finance, procurement. It all goes through each department, and then monies are dispersed according to this schedule, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
It is a reimbursement scheme.
It's not a blank check.
Not a guarantee of $4 million, up to $4 million per this dispersment schedule.
Yes. Again, can I ask any counsel discussion?
I'm, we have, we have just beaten this to, I think, I think we need a consensus to move this forward.
I need to just hear from counsel.
In 22, in 22, I think it was February 2022, I want to say, or maybe it was '23. We, we did a resolution to move this forward. We've talked about it. We've talked to the state about what were the acceptable things for reimbursement. We got answers directly from the department. We have been over this, and I'm ready to move forward.
I, I, I'm right along, that's, she basically said everything I was going to say.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I'm ready to move forward too.
Let's get it done.
Okay. Councilwoman DeShiel, any, anything? No?
I just would point out procedurally, this is different than any other type of grant. Normally, the subrecipient agreement is done before the monies come in.
Yeah.
This time, the monies came in before, I think, the city or administration realized that they were to be received. The ordinance where the grant funds were accepted said the city would enter into a subrecipient agreement, and then, so this is just following up on that ordinance to enter into the subrecipient agreement should mayor and council decide to move forward.
Yes. Okay, so it sounds like, again, we need, what is it, a resolution or ordinance to go along with this and move it along to?
Yeah, because it would be a resolution to approve the subrecipient agreement.
Okay. Counsel, do we want to instruct Legal to move forward with that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Can you draft that for next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else you need from us, Ms. Boucher?
So on the next work session, I believe you would have the resolution and the subrecipient agreement. At that point, you would decide whether there was consensus to move forward with the resolution and the subrecipient agreement, and then it would be scheduled for a legislative session.
Legislative session, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll move forward to the public comment section of the agenda. Again, on the agenda, items only, three minutes, if you can just state your name, and if you are a city resident, that we appreciate it.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Jovanosa, Salisbury city resident. I realize that the recent court ruling against the city regarding the restraining order for lot 10 happened, but it's my understanding that the city is still in litigation on the lot issue itself. What we just witnessed, if I understand it, was the city council wanting to pass a resolution while the city is still in litigation. I realize there are certain people on the council who do just want to give Nick Simpson, Brett Gillis, and all their friends our tax money. I understand, that's your prerogative, but it seems that it doesn't really make a lot of logical sense to push a resolution when litigation is still happening. It's, it actually delegitimizes this body further. But I didn't actually come to speak to that. I, I, I wanted to address very quickly the issue of 287G. Can you check my time? Because it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll take the extra time. Thank you.
No, you won't. You're half over.
Oh.
I'll be sure to buzz it for you.
If it's one thing you're good at, it's math.
That's right.
Let's, let's, let's.
Thank you. Okay, I'll stop at 1:30. Thank you. So I would bet my life and everyone's life here, to be frank, that most of the people on this council don't actually know the details of the 287G program, regardless of how you feel about it, okay? Whether you're in favor or not. And for the record, I'm not in favor of it, and there's very, and there's many reasons for that. But part of the problem is that there is no communication occurring from the officials who need to be communicating. If council members are caught blindsided by it, I'm embarrassed for you because several private citizens knew this was coming and heard about it. So if you're elected officials and you don't know what's going on, I don't know what you're doing with our public trust. It's, that's embarrassing. Secondly, because this is a county issue, if anybody here is concerned or in favor of 287G, regardless, you need to address your attention to the county executive office. And unfortunately, and I have to give the mayor credit on this one, you at least are here answering questions and taking criticism. The county executive, unless you're a donor, does not meet with any member of the public at all. So that needs to be understood. Send any email to county executive Julie Giordano. She is the authority who determines whether or not we have agreements, and she's given three or four different versions of that. She's had a pretty tough week, so she might not get to your emails ever, but that's the entity you need to address. So please, take that into consideration and do better, counsel. Thank you.
Hi, Liza McInty, City of Salisbury, 1419, Hidden Meadow Lane. I would also like to comment on the proposed agreement that the City of Salisbury has apparently come to with ICE. Maybe, maybe not. It sounds like it's up in the air. come to with ICE, maybe, maybe not, it sounds like it's up in the air, so ultimately, I could stand up here and give a whole dissertation about all of the ethical, financial and legal problems with the way that the United States handles immigration and enforcement, but we'd be here for at least a semester, so, I will make one point that I think speaks to both sides of the aisle, public safety, I see a lot of grandstanding across the country from those who wish to purge this country of undocumented immigrants saying that they support this partnership because they want dangerous criminals off our streets, however, this agreement literally makes Salisbury more dangerous, because do you know what happens when local police departments team up with ICE even in a limited capacity, immigrant communities don't report crime, they're afraid to cooperate as witnesses, et cetera, if you want dangerous people off of the street, you need the cooperation and the trust of the communities that you serve, ICE is a federal agency carrying out their own agenda and Salisbury should not be doing the dirty work for them, this job of the City of Salisbury and the Salisbury Police Department is to serve the residents of Salisbury, it is not their job to serve a federal agency that is both violating constitutional law and basic human rights with impunity well documented on a daily basis, I personally would much rather that our undocumented residents trust our local agencies enough to report abusers, rapists, traffickers, burglars, et cetera, than stay silent for fear of deportation, the goal should always be harm reduction and this partnership is a net harm for the safety of Salisbury, which those who made this decision would know if they did an ounce of research before deciding to grandstand with this complete nonsense, there is a mountain of data available that illustrates my point and I would encourage our elected representatives to do their due diligence in examining said data, thank you.
All right, so, I already spoke on two eighty-seven G earlier, so I'm not going to repeat what I said, now, I heard what the mayor had to say in regards to wanting the, they say the Salisbury police to be able to get rid of or look into the status of someone that they stopped for a simple traffic stop, so because I'm driving and I have a taillight that's busted, you stopped me and you want to ask me for my legal status, so if you get stopped, you, you, should I be asking for birth certificate as well?
Everyone gets checked.
So, so I should ask you for a birth certificate, does that make sense? There is a process, there's the immigration court that they have to deal with, let them go to the immigration court and let the judge, immigration judge, deal with that, that's not our job, if they break the law, the county, the local polices, let them deal with that, that's not our job, they break the law, wherever that goes, yes, if someone commits a crime, you can go online and you figure out what the, even someone that didn't pay their rent, you can go online, you can find that, but let the system deal with these individuals, I think this is ridiculous, this is what we're talking about, this, if we, if we can't report these people, if these people can't report, imagine someone that has a spouse and his spouse is abusing them, but because they are of the legal status, now, let's talk about status, a lot of these folks didn't come here illegal, they had legal status, there's something else called TPS, look it up, there's something that's called CHNV, the previous administration put a program together where someone can come here legally, but that status was ripped away from them by the current administration, so now, you make them illegal, but they had legal status, if you don't like the process, you don't like how it was, fix it, that's what we can, we can fix things, but don't make it worse, if you have anyone that's illegal in this country, it's because we made them illegal, the current administrations, so locally here as a city, you're not immigration, I'm heartbreaking to hear how we want to treat people, it feels like I'm going back to, you know, the whole black, you know, this is ridiculous, guys.
Good evening, my name is Samson, I didn't come here to speak, but after everything that I heard, I cannot stay silent, I came here when I was nineteen, I got four daughters, three of them went to SU, one of them is still at SU right now, my first one, her husband is immigrant, right now he's a state trooper, serving the country, and my question to the mayor is, being part of that partnership, what is going to bring to our city, do you really like going out to the city to see the businesses, I am a business owner, I got multiple, multi-businesses in the city, look, go just driving around to see how many businesses that owned by immigrants, now just go to check it out, check the record of the crime to see how much crime that immigrant causing the city, I've been working with the immigrants for many years, whatsoever, none of my clients have been in any sort of trouble of committed any crimes, I witnesses the struggle going to those chicken plants, get up early in the morning, it's snow, to provide for the family, but when it comes to this criminal thing, been living in this city for over thirty years, I don't see what you are talking about, we are hardworking people, we come here, we make a difference, we have immigrants right here, there are police officers, state troopers, business owners, pastors, students, last year, check your record, the Haitian immigrants were the second language in this county, that's how many immigrants that you have, not even to have mentioned the Latinos, so, just come in here, what I would just like to do in evaluation, to see what we are contribute to this community, and then to say that we are criminal, we are, need to be away from this country, it's shame, it is shame. I fought a lot when I came to this community, when there was, there was, there was like a battle.
Thank you.
Between the African-American and the, and the, and the black Haitian.
Mr. Samson.
Or the black country.
Thank you.
But, but for what we, for what we produce to this community, for this city, you need to check the record of the immigrant to see what we are contribute in this community before you make a decision that going to harm the community, that going to bring anything good but hurts.
Mr. Samson, thank you, I know, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Taylor again, I didn't come here to speak about two eighty-seven G, but I will say that there's been a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding and it all goes back to the county executive and the way she's played this card, and if you'll remember about two weeks ago, that was on WBOC, something about Congressman Harris congratulates the county for having an MOU with ICE, well, he fell into it too because of a press release that she put out, and I'm not going to speak pro or con two eighty-seven G, but I do want to say, we're trying on the open agenda program to bring the facts to the public's attention, not arguing one way or the other, I may get into that a little bit if I still have some time, what I did come to speak about, again, were these annexations and tying it into what I said earlier about affordable housing, why are we considering annexations for residential development or any permits for development until we get this affordable housing thing straightened out, now, it's perfectly legal to put a moratorium on things when you're working on something like developing an affordable housing program, it can't be forever, rough rule, thumb is six months, if you're still actively almost at the verge of completing it in six months, you can extend it for a brief period of time, I'm very familiar with this, and that's what we need to do, if the mayor will appoint the task force, I'm pretty sure that we, something can be put before counsel within six months, because I've done a lot of research, I mean, there are a lot of places, counties and other towns in Maryland and throughout the country that have done serious affordable housing legislation, that's what we need, let's do it, got a minute left, just a few things on two eighty-seven G, it's been around for some years, it was put into law in nineteen ninety-six, January twenty of this year, you may remember, something happened, there was an inauguration in Washington, at that time, there were a hundred and twenty-four jurisdictions around the country that had MOUs with ICE at some level, there's several levels, today, as of mid-September, there are over a thousand, so roughly eight hundred and some occurred since January the twentieth, now, there are some municipalities that have ICE MOUs, there are none in Maryland, there are eight counties in Maryland and that's it. One county, incidentally, it's Anarundel, once had an MOU with ICE and discontinued it, so there's, there's a lot to be learned about this, watch open agenda, we'll bring it to you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Langford, I live in Tab twenty-six Arthur Court, couple things about the resolutions for annexation, so I was there at the Plas Planning and Zoning Meeting on April twenty-first, apparently the property is about twelve acres and there's that easement they were talking about because of the utility line, so you're developing on about ten acres is what they said, a little bit over that, so when the developer spoke in favor of it, the developer said that there would be affordable housing, the price range that he quoted for building the townhomes, which was the idea, the increased density would allow them to increase, make more housing and less space, right, and that that townhome, rather than single-family dwelling, is cheaper on the market, a new construction four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand, or fifty, sorry, four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars for a single-family new home, he's talking about a townhome being two hundred and sixty, hundred thousand or two hundred and seventy, hundred thousand, so that's the affordable mark, so if you buy that townhome, you better have two hundred and sixty thousand, do you want to know what the average median income for Wycomico County is, eighty-eight thousand, and that seems high based on the people I hang out with, but I don't know, and then the affordable housing as defined by HUD, the fed, the feds themselves, is thirty percent of monthly income, so if you got thirty percent of monthly income and you make eighty-eight thousand a year, how is two hundred and sixty, hundred thousand dollars affordable, so it doesn't matter what they say, you got to hold people to what they say, with the, with the development, which we've been speaking about, the other aspect, the Shoemaker Landing Annexation, fishy just in the fact that they said that the density would be twenty instead of twelve, which is what it's like zoned for, you know, so I think it might have been like an R twenty designation in the county and it bringing it in, we should not be increasing the density, if we do, then we need to make sure that in these deals, that we're putting that on the developer, when we did the Horizons program, we waived all these connect fees, that's why you have the reallocation of PFAS from Budget Amendment Ordinance Number two nine five three tonight due to waiving connect fees for Horizons, we are now sending money from a lawsuit into the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund because we didn't use the enterprise fund, which is water sewer in the proper sense, so the Shoemaker Landing is just, so now he wants to, whoever this is, wants to do twenty, a density increase of twenty instead of twelve, that's too much, it needs to be on the developer to create that infrastructure for the city, that's how railroads got made in this country, you just tax people and you make them pay for it, I mean, it's just what you do, you just have to hold their feet to the fire, you just have to, yeah, have some cojones, so I'm put it that way, the last thing that I want to speak on is the lot ten, there's no firm plans in DID, why would we allocate taxpayer money irresponsibly to a company that cannot provide planning or evidence of financing for any deal, why would we allocate millions of state funds and taxpayer money to a company that can't even abide by the city's planning process, thank you for your time.
My name is Suzanne Mallow, Drake Hill Avenue, one of the most beautiful, beautiful sounds I've ever heard in this community, was in Holloway Hall Auditorium when I was working with the Haitian community on an event that many of the churches were doing, and to hear what a friend we have in Jesus sung in Haitian Creole touched me down to the cellular level, it was so absolutely beautiful and I felt so incredibly blessed at that moment and so proud to live in this community, so proud that I lived in a place that has, oops, it's a bad word, diversity, diversity, that makes us stronger, so when I saw that press release too and when all this started, it angered me, it saddened me, it scared me, it suddenly made me distrustful of all law enforcement, and I felt so proud of our city police department because I think they worked hard to build our trust, not only that, I don't want, I would hope that our community would not align themselves with an agency that advertises on Craigslist to get their employees, who are untrained in law enforcement techniques, who are oftentimes bounty hunters, I find it offensive, extremely offensive, and it saddens me that this has even been brought forth, I thought we were better than this.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Bratton, I've been relatively silent the last few meetings, and that's because I think there just wasn't anything I wanted to add to anything, but tonight I do want to add one thing, as you look at the new annexation plans, the new development ideas, the, the expansion of density, the expansion of houses, the expansion of affordable houses, affordable to one person is not affordable to someone else, so I do believe there need to be guidelines that specify what that is, as Michael just identified, a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar home is what they're saying is more affordable than a five hundred thousand dollar home, okay, I get that, but who's got two hundred and sixty thousand laying around, you know, I'm having trouble selling a hundred and ninety thousand dollar house in Salisbury, let alone the one, one of the other ones, but if you're going to listen, if you're asking to get a presentation, I heard you all say you wanted a presentation from the folks who wanted, who were requesting the annexation, I mean, somebody looks at this as a business proposition, they're saying, we want to be into the city because you get city water and sewer, you don't have to worry about septic systems, lots of perks that come along with being in the city, I've got, I've got some stuff in Salt, in Somerset County, I'm thinking the same thing, it's got advantages if you got city services, okay, and you're saying, let's hear from the developers what they want to do, let's hear their, their PR pitch, let's hear everything they've got to say, give equal time to the people who live in those neighborhoods and in those areas, don't live on the one side, you need to listen to both sides, you, you need to listen to the people that have lived there for the last few years, the folks who've already spent their two hundred and fifty thousand or their five hundred thousand on properties, they need equal time to say, this is why we are here, this is not what we thought we were seeing when we put our money into this, we saw cornfields, that's what we saw when we developed, when we bought, we did not see a hundred and fifty houses coming down the street with people and their bikes and their, their vehicles and their delivery trucks and the Amazons and, give equal, give them equal due, give the, give the residents equal, equal time along with the pitch that you're going to hear from the developers, that's all I'm saying, fair is fair, let's give it equal time.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, Lana Foley, City of Salisbury resident, this past weekend, I'm going to speak quickly because I have a couple of things I want to say, but I wrote something up first, this past weekend, the Maryland Folk Festival reminded us that community, what community really truly looks like, vibrant, diverse, full of love and culture, from music and food to stories and traditions, it was a celebration of all the richness that immigrants in multicultural communities bring to our lives, events like that serve as a stark reminder of what we stand to lose, when we target immigrant communities with fear-based policies, we risk erasing the very culture that makes us stronger, this isn't just about the immigration policy, it's about who we are as a community and what we value, no one wants criminals on the street, and it's heartbreaking to think that some of our residents believe protecting immigrants means supporting crime, that's a false and dangerous narrative, in California, a seventy-three-year-old Indian grandmother was recently detained by ICE despite working with ICE, the ICE agency for thirteen years, just for going in for her routine check-in, and her only crime was being Indian, I was told this morning by a friend that she witnessed ICE, an ICE raid on classic lawn care team on Nanonoke and Levin de Shiel, a week ago, a local farmer shared that three of their workers were detained at a seven-eleven getting a drink, people are scared, not just of ICE, but of speaking out, they want to protect their neighbors, their coworkers, their friends, but fear public backlash or worse, this isn't a black and white issue of people being too lazy to get their status, the reality is more complicated and often heartbreaking. The reality is more complicated and often heartbreaking. Profiling doesn't always happen at a traffic stop, it happens at booking. A name, an accent, a birthplace, those become grounds for detention. And that destroys trust in law enforcement and disproportionately harms black and brown communities. Right now, the 287G program is being presented as a local partnership with ICE, limited to the jail. But make no mistake, this is a test run. Once it's in place, ICE's role can quietly expand. And the public will have little power to stop it unless we elect leadership in the future willing to push back. Here's the truth, some may believe immigrants are a drain on our resources, but that couldn't be further than the truth. Immigrants give us more than they, give more than they take. They pay taxes, they contribute to Social Security even though they'll never get it, they work hard, raise families. And we should be focusing on affordable housing, education, healthcare, mental health services, and community programs. And I Googled it, and you can, as a city, go into a 287G program. But that would be the warrant service officer, which Trump did say that he's willing to pay for. So I don't know if that's where we're going with this.
Hi, I'm Lee, can you hear me? I'm Lee Duenquater. I live Shoemaker Manor Drive, 909. I'm a teacher and I work, and this is really hard for me too, okay? I work with people who are Hispanic, Haitian kids. I had a family just move in, they were Puerto Rican. And I know that we have more, but I know that we have a lot of Haitian students here. I'm very close friends with a family, Haitian family, and I'm also close friends with a Hispanic family that I've worked with. In early June, one of the fathers was taken, a Hispanic father was taken. And this man is a really good man. He's never done anything wrong other than come into this country illegally with his wife in 2008. He's been trying to get, he's been trying to become legal since he moved here and he's paid a lot of money into the system and it takes many years. This is not an easy process. So when people say, well, just, you know, do your job, get legal, it isn't that easy. This man and his wife have two young children and they are the most wonderful children ever. They're both like honorable students, they're beautiful people. This man has his own business. He has a tax ID number, he pays taxes, he's not trying to hide. So when he was taken, he doesn't get any money back either for paying his taxes, but his kids certainly do because they are citizens, they were born here. But he doesn't get any money back, his wife doesn't get any money back. They aren't taking from us, they're giving to us and they're wonderful people. The Haitian family, the same. That mom is a squeaky wheel for her daughter in the school system and she is Mom of the Year. I love her. There is nothing I wouldn't do for these people. And these are just two families out of all the kids I've worked with. So I really think that you all need to look at this from your heart. There's humanity here. Find humanity and remember, these people are good people and they're working really hard to have a good life because they came from something that was horrible. Both of them, both families, I found out their stories. And if you were in the same position, what would you do? I know if I were in that position and I had no money or I had gang activity or it was a bad situation, you're damn right, I would want to leave where I came from and survive and bring my family. So please, have heart. And I got to tell you something, I came back to Salisbury after many years of being, can I just say one more thing? Please. Without being here for many years, I was gone for 40 years and I'm old, so you know, I've been back for many years. But let me tell you, when I came back here, I was really disappointed in how conservative this community is. But tonight, I have been heartened. I have been really heartened by this group of people who I think really care. And I'm really heartened by the audience because I feel like you people really care and we have to pull together because together we can make this better.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Carolyn Woganath again from Salisbury. I'm glad that you decided to table the annexation of North Shoemaker Drive for now. But I think that as a council, you need to educate yourselves on the fact of the county and the city have different zoning codes. And when I moved here, when we bought our house in 2009, so I've been here 14 years, I knew that there was a property that was county-zoned R-20. So yes, I expected that somebody might build on that. But that house was going to have 20,000 square feet as opposed to 5,000 or 10,000. Now, and I had gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission and talked to those people who have been intransigent in the past about apartment issues. And it was like they didn't even listen. And one member came up with something that had never been suggested by anyone. And they decided to agree as a group to something that nobody had even discussed. Our county and our city planning departments, commissions are split. We haven't heard yet anything about our own planning, city planning. I think it needs to wait until we have our own planning commission for starts. I think you need to know what the city zoning codes are. And based upon previous developer statements, we need to have a voice at the table too. When the developer comes and sits up here, he tells you everything that you want to hear. And he's wonderful and all that. But we need to bring our voice to the table because we've lived here a long time now. We've retired here, we want to stay here. The developer, from the last meeting, he's misrepresented the property to start with. He says it's 12.77 acres. It is not. I looked up the deed. I looked up the State Department of Taxation. He paid $200,000 for a 12.1 acre. So we're lying about that to start with. And then he's all for, well, we could build other types of housing, but they would be too expensive, which is not true. You can build a small, single-family home. We have single-family homes further down that street that are less than $300,000. You could build a small, single-family home, one story, one and a half. It doesn't have to be huge and oversized. It just needs to be compatible with the neighborhoods nearby.
Thank you.
And you really need to decide what you want to do about Shoemaker Pond because you're going to destroy the pond if you have too much storm runoff.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Hiligoss, CEO of Habitat for Humanity and resident of City of Salisbury. I came here tonight to talk about the annexation piece. I'm concerned that we don't have a comprehensive plan yet, do we? Did I miss that meeting? We don't have it? No? No, no comprehensive plan. So we don't have the one with all the meetings that we've all been, that many of you, I recognize, have been to. We don't have the finalized comprehensive plan. So the annexation and all of these conversations, just my opinion, are a little premature. But when it comes to affordable and attainable, let's talk about the cost of construction. So the cost of construction for a Habitat modest home now is 250,000. That is not an affordable cost, but that's what we have to pay to build affordable housing. So when you have, and we're technically a developer, a nonprofit developer. So when you have for-profit developers, it's going to cost them more and they're going to want a profit. So then we really need to think about, how are we going to make sure that families that want to become homeowners but happen to be low to moderate income can attain that? And so there are some things that we could do. There are communities like Montgomery County has a Live Where You Work program for their county residents. The mayor, you know, we've talked about this in the past, could put something in place for city employees to become homeowners. And it's a Live Where You Work program, you guys could do this. You could also fund permanent rate buy downs. Permanent rate buy downs. What that means is instead of 6.5% interest rate, wouldn't a 3.5% be really great? That would make it easier for a low to moderate income family to be able to afford a mortgage. So those are the types of things. Down payment assistance. Again, there could be something not just for city employees, but for city residents. Significant down payment assistance is necessary. So you can have the affordable component, this is how you can do it. And making sure you have the money set aside so that whatever, whoever builds whatever they want to build, whether it's, you know, what looks like apartments, could be condos that are for sale. So why can't those be an option? Because not everybody wants to live in a single-family home. Some folks, you know, are done cutting the grass and they want to live in a condo. I mean, it's just, these are just options. The last thing I want to say is related to the, all the conversation about the immigration. No one has talked about the number of jobs lost. So Outen Brothers is liquidating, they are going out of business because immigrants aren't buying furniture now. They're saving their money, they're in hiding. Thrift stores' sales are down. Sales of the restor are significantly down.
Thank you.
And let's not, let's not forget the poultry plants that have laid off hundreds, hundreds. Mount Air, 800 people. Purdue, hundreds. So there will be a ripple effect.
Thank you.
And I'm very nervous about that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Monica Brooks, Salisbury resident. I have yet to see a video, an actual encounter, which I've seen many as I've driven by, I've seen as I'm in my vehicle, of interactions with ICE. I have yet to see anybody who is not melanated getting dragged out the car, thrown to the ground, pulled out their homes and their churches invaded. And we know, we have a horde of Eastern Europeans that come here every year and work. Now you can't tell me everybody go back home because I wouldn't. I have yet to see across this country, people who are not black and brown, who have been public enemy number one in these raids. So you cannot tell me that this thing has nothing to do with race or ethnic profiling. I personally am thinking the fact that the population in the United States being majority black and brown coming up real soon, somebody got scared about that. There's a whole lot of cross going on, black and brown with the non-black and brown. This country's getting browner and browner. It's beautiful. But I think somebody don't like that. And this is just another way, this is like a form of ethnic cleansing. So while this particular, what I'm saying at this moment has nothing to do with 287G specifically, what I'm trying to tell you is this whole push with immigration is targeted to people that look like me or people who look similar to me because that's what we're seeing. That's the stereotype. That's when people are stopped, when they're walking down the street. They're not stopping nobody that look like Michelle.
Mm-mm.
No. They're going to pass Michelle.
April.
And they're going to stop, say April, they're going to go.
It's the truth. It is the truth and that's, yeah.
Can I just tell you? I'm sorry. The video that would make, that would go viral if they tried to stop Councilwoman Jackson. You wouldn't want to see it. It would be a sight. But I say that to say, what I'm trying to say, and even to you, Mayor, I'm Taylor, I remember your name, is that what you may not realize is by even considering this and the comment about, you know, Trump saying now that he wants to pay for it because now that's the argument. So now he's going, wants to come up with the money. That's still our money. You're putting yourself in a position that is making you more unfavorable in the community. You don't need that smoke. Just walk away.
Again, the floor is still open for those wishing to make public comment on any items at the work session. Seeing none, we will continue forth to administration comments, if there are any.
I have just a couple if I could. It's been a long night and everybody's tired. I do want to just say that when you were talking to us tonight, I wanted to take the time to look you in the face so that you were talking to somebody. But I am just a representative of the city. So if you see me in the market, we're still good, okay? And then the last thing is, this will be my last council meeting because Nick will be here on the 6th. So I've been happy to stand in for a few weeks. So that's all.
Thank you, Tom. You're still with the city though?
Oh yeah, I'm not going in.
Yeah, I just want to put a final point, whether people are listening or not. Sampson, I know you, I met your daughter, I think I met your daughter, I mean, your son-in-law, I met with you in Reverend Tucson. I've lived in North Camden for 25 years. That's one block from one of the deepest, densest Haitian communities in the city. Before that, I lived at the corner of Church and Truitt, which was a highly Hispanic neighborhood. I mean, the idea, before that, I lived in DC, I lived in Mount Pleasant, which is right after the riots. So the idea that I have any kind of notion of racism is just offensive as hell. I got to be frank, like fighting pissed off about it. So you guys taking that as just a cheap political nonsense. My motivation, pure and simple, from the get-go was to keep the streets safer. And as I understood what they were trying to implement, I was trying to follow that lead. That's it. I don't think anybody in this room wants dangerous people living next to them. It would be administrative and judicial warrants is what the motivation was, or they got arrested that night for something else. That said, I'm not going to talk about it anymore. It's cheap political theater to try and describe it any other way. At least it weighs my motivation. And I can't apologize for everything ICE has done, you know, but also I can't apologize for everything that's happened in terms of immigration, period, in the last 10 years. That said, I hope everybody had a good time at the festival this weekend. I certainly did and I enjoyed it. And I enjoyed the diversity and I enjoy the diversity of music. So, but I personally find it very offensive, the people would suggest such stupid things. It's just, it's just classless in my view.
Again, not, before we go to council comments, I usually don't respond or speak to, but no cheap political theater and no accusations or comments were made directly. But I just, I need to say that again because when comments are made directed towards the council and myself, usually I keep my, I bite my tongue, but no.
I wasn't talking to council, I was talking in general.
Okay, Mayor, respectfully.
Okay.
Bless. Council comments.
I have.
Thank you. Yes.
I would like to invite the council to take a walk in Pemberton Apartments.
Absolutely.
Mayor, you're invited to come too, because we need to see what goes on over there and how this place has become a third, like it looks like a third world country. And I hate to say that, but it's true. And just like this lady came up, Demetria Marshall came up and spoke about it, I've been speaking about it every since I've been on the council.
Yes, yes, yes.
Every since I've been on the council. I've even taken Mayor Day and Kevin Lindsay over there to walk. No one, I don't care if they pay zero rent, should not be living under those conditions.
No one, I don't care if they pay zero rent, should not be living under those conditions. They're inhabitable. And I just don't think no one should be living in there. Now, mind you, if they were to close it down, then there would be hundreds of families without allocation. I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking that we go and see and try to help this out, because the people live in New Jersey. The developers or whoever owns this now lives in New Jersey. I questioned them. I called them. Tryco. I said, do you know what conditions your development is in? She says, no, we're in New Jersey. So what does that tell you? You're in New Jersey, so you don't care how our city looks or how our people live. Well, I do care. And not just because it's in my district, it could be anywhere in the city of Salisbury. No one should live like that. So I'm inviting you, I will send you out a notice of what day, y'all let me know what day is convenient for you all, and we can walk the premises. And as she did say, the lady that's in that office is nasty. Nasty. She was nasty over to the lodges at Nellie Mill Road, and she's nasty. And it makes no sense, because when you're dealing with people, you have to be very professional. Now, no matter who they are, you be professional, and she's not. Um, I want to talk about the Relay for Life. Friday, I didn't get to make it to the Folk Festival, but by the time I got home, I was worn totally out. But I'm gonna tell you, I never went to such an event. I'm telling you, if you missed it, don't miss it next year for nothing. I had the time of my life. I cried, I laughed, I cried, I laughed. It was just like an emotional roller coaster. And I would like to thank everyone who came out, and those who did come and support me when you're staying. That are here, yeah. I had a team of 22, I had a team of 22 people on my team. Next year, I want a team of 50. And I want to raise five to $10,000, because cancer is a deadly disease. It's deadly. I'm a two-time survivor, and I want other people to survive. I was blessed, I was lucky. But I don't want to lose another life to cancer. I lost my mother and my father to cancer. I lost my cousin, which was like my sister, to cancer. I don't want to lose another life. And those who have cancer, my, my motto is fight back. Don't give up. Please don't give up. And I want a reminder of the Waterside Park Neighborhood Walk, which is Wednesday the 24th, September 24th, 5:00 PM. Come on over. Bring your families over. Let's walk, talk, eat, whatever we can do, have fun. We need that. We need to make sure that, that that park is being utilized. And Mike Poremski is our park president, and for our commission, and he does a very, very good job. I love Mike, but I don't get to make it to all the meetings, and I know he's through with me, but I'm gonna try my best, and simply because I've been sick, for real. I'm still not as well as I want to be, but I want to be able to support him in all he does. And I'm gonna ask the mayor a question right now. If, with the commissions, we need more members. So we need to put something on our web city website. We need more active members. And could you tell me what the ages they have to be? Are there any specific ages?
Ages of the people?
The people that want to be on the commission, because we even thought about getting teenagers, but we wanted to, because we had teenagers that live in, in each district. And who can tell you best what a, a park needs or playground needs than a child? Or what's missing? A child. So we wanted to make sure we got like at least 13 to 17.
Like on Wyndham or something?
Yeah, Wyndham, yeah. So we want to get more members. So if you want to be a member, please get in touch with Julie English, our city clerk, and let her know, we have applications, our forms or whatever. We're trying to bring this back to where it should be. So just, if you want to be a part of it, I'm begging, please be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. And I echo your thoughts about Pemberton again. Wednesday, we'll, we'll be right across the street from Pemberton, but when I, when I went last year, I, again, I had friends that lived over in Pemberton when I was younger, and it is completely different now. I was, I was, yeah, my heart was, was heavy when I left last year to deliver some meals. Council members, again, just, just filter in, in the effort of time. Yep, just go ahead, just, not all at once, yes.
Listening.
Okay.
Councilwoman DeShiel, go ahead.
9/11 was a very somber event this year. April and I were privileged to be a part of the collaboration between the Salisbury Fire Department and the Salisbury Police Department. And they had a memorial ceremony and did, it did a very, very moving job with that. Ribbon cutting was last week for the Aviation Maintenance Tech School. And as I said to you before, there are 15 students in this program. And that, it's a true example of what collaborating with the state, the county, UMES, the city, I mean, just everybody that was involved brought this to fruition. And hopefully, we will benefit from the graduates from this school, because they will hopefully stay here, and also their skill set will also be important for, say, Chesapeake Shipbuilding and other projects in addition to the airport. Relay for Life, as April said, we have another survivor here who stood up, who participated, Lynn Bratton, in the back. Folk Festival, I mean, huge, huge. Larnes, one, two, okay. There's, that's wonderful, just great. The city, what a phenomenal job. Not only setup for that Folk Festival, but the breakdown. Oh, my God, it's like, it was here, it's gone. And that's a huge, huge, efficient manner that they make all this happen quickly, and we all got to enjoy it, they enjoyed it, but then they also did the work to get, you know, clean up everything. So thank you for that. Another event today, Title Health Family Medicine Residency Clinic had a groundbreaking over on Morris Street. And it is, it's an outreach into the community, which to me is so important. Transportation is an issue for a lot of people. And they are building this wonderful, Brad, how big is it? I just saw you in the back.
About 30 thousand.
Okay, and it's just phenomenal. It's going to have a nutrition piece to it. It's going to have a farmer's market, basically, a garden, a community room. And the whole point of this is access to the medical facility in the own neigh, in their own neighborhood, the training new doctors in family medicine, behavioral health services. And what's really cool is it's supposed to be open in 2027. So drive by there. It's another example of us, the Title Health or any large medical facility, going outreach, outreaching into a neighborhood so that the people become part of this facility, and hopefully that we retain, we retain a lot of the doctors that, or the students that become doctors there. Lastly, this Saturday, there is a resource fair. Those of you that know where the Presbyterian Church is on Broad Street, they, in the basement, there is an unbelievable resource that I'm so proud to be a part of, Hope, which is an outreach. The director there is Debbie Messick Rossi, and they're having another fair this Saturday. They had one last year, it was phenomenal. Anything you need is in one place. Resources for help with children, insurance, health, food, you name it, and all the resources they brought together in one location. So spread the word, and it's from 10 until 2, and it's in the parking lot behind the Presbyterian Church. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'm just gonna go really quickly, if you don't mind. I just want to thank the folks that came out here tonight and have stuck through both the legislative session and the work session for this, to come out and speak on behalf of, of the immigrant community, and those of you who are part of the immigrant community for coming out and speaking. We really, really appreciate hearing from you guys. I just want to thank folks who have reached out over the course of the past month. Nick is doing better, he is home, but he still requires a lot of hands-on care, so I'm going to be minimally out in public as much as I can, but it's, he's still very, he still needs a lot of minute-by-minute care. So I appreciate everybody's patience and, and everybody who's reached out. It's meant a lot to me to, to get folks touching base and just checking on us and that sort of thing. And I just want to give a shout out again to KT for all the work that he does for the Folk Festival. He does a tremendous amount of work. Thank you so much. And for all the team, for Caroline and everybody, the Folk Festival's an amazing event every year, and I just, I was so bummed to miss it this year, honestly. But I appreciate you guys, and I can't wait for next year.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory.
We, we did miss you on the bucket. I was trying to raise money on Facebook, at least. It was, it was very nice. Folk Festival was absolutely fantastic. Of course, the food was great, the drinks were great, everything was great, the music, obviously. So, but, so by the time it gets to me, there's, so much has been said. But I just want to reiterate a few things, that the, in, in no way was the city council had any consultation. There was no consultation with our legal team. There was, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm speaking, thank you. I appreciate that. There was no MOU with the Sheriff's Department, or even with the Sheriff's Department and our police department. There was no written process of any procedure that was described, a process or procedure for any additional duty, or, or anything to fill in the gap, or whatever. I don't even know, don't even understand to this minute what, what's not being done. But just sometimes when the press releases come out, understand that they're not from the council, that, you know, you know, they, the administration, they've released their own information, and we're not often consulted. We have asked many, many times for more communication, and I think that's what the issue is. I don't think it's about the council doing better. I think the council has been clear and has asked on multiple occasions, on multiple things, for more open and collaborative communication. The annexation presentation tonight was a little confusing, and I'm looking forward to the presentation from, from the developers, to hear what, what we don't know. It sounded like it was, maybe there were some gaps in what the actual package was to, to the coding, or the, so I just, or the zone coatings. So I think, I think some more clarification with that would go a long way. Again, some communication, some preemptive work on that might have been helpful. It just would have been helpful. Now, Lot 10, the resolution with that, remember the resolution and the lawsuit are two different things. They're two different things, they're not, not one has to deal with the other. So I know some people were really hung up on that, but that has nothing, one is, they're two different issues, two different issues. Affordable housing, we were at Lesma last week, I think it was last Thursday, to Chrisfield. And, yeah, and they had something very interesting, and I would like us to invite the Chrisfield mayor here, Victoria, to come and talk to us about.
Good luck wrapping her down.
I know. She's very busy. She's busy. She's definitely here, there, and everywhere. She advocates every day, every minute for her, her city. But one of the things, and one of the initiatives that they have, is this low-income housing initiative. And I would like to have her come here and give the council a presentation on what they're actually doing in Cambridge, and see if we can't get any ideas, and just some, share some information.
Chrisfield.
Yeah, of course. Oh, what did I say? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant Chris. Thank you. Thank you for keeping me straight. So I think that would be really nice. I don't know when we could get her on the agenda, if we could reach out to her. Okay. Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. And I do want, and somebody brought it up earlier this evening, and I don't know who or when, but I do know that the Bike and Pedestrian Commission have also been asking, at one point early on, when we realized we couldn't use the full 12 million, now I see that we have a, nine million is going into infrastructure and projects, which is really good. And we talked about those, and we were to get a list of what they were, like, where's the ADA grant going? Where's the extra curbing going? But then where did that three mil go? Because it was a whole 12 million, and now we're down the nine million to do some infrastructure. I mean, that's still a lot of money. I mean, that's a chunk of money that I think everyone would really like to know exactly, you know, like a list. And we were told, Nick did tell us, that we were going to get a list, and he actually showed us some things, some additional crosswalks, curbing. It looked really beautiful on the screen, but we've not had a punch list. So that, that would be really helpful, I think, for people to be more settled into where such a big chunk of money is going, because I know we had to, like, recalibrate that whole grant, and some of that wasn't going to work for some of the bike lanes and stuff, due to the, the way the neighborhoods were lined up. And thanks again to every city worker and everybody who come out and did such a phenomenal job on the Folk Festival. That takes a lot, that's a lot of planning and a lot of coordination. And every year, without doubt, that goes off without a hitch, and it's always a great time. I appreciate our, our employees, and, and it really makes you proud to be somebody from Salisbury.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Thank you, council. Really quick, because I know that we are, we've been here for quite some time, so thank you all for your patience, thank you. Well, I think this is important business that we're discussing here. They're gonna be on, replay will play, and, and, well. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Man, I try to, I try to be, you know, okay. Really quick, again, thank you all for discussion. I know we had some, some important and underscoring discussion on, that, that affects, you know, humanity and just those things, which, again, basic human rights, but it's, it brings up a lot when we have those. So thank you all for coming and voicing your concerns, question, and, and just coming to us. Again, that's why we put that, those things kind of on the agenda. And then, you know, even myself, when, when I hear comments being made in, in the public, you know, from folks who are well-respected, I hear comments made about certain demographics, certain groups, who live in certain areas, and just plans for what we're going to do with them, and they're using, it just, no. Again, we're all humans, we're all here on this earth trying to do something. There's, it hurts when there's things that people are targeted. That's what we're here to do, as we continue to do. I'm proud of my fellow members for voicing concerns and just trying to do better for Salisbury. And that's what we'll continue to do, of course, with you all's support. Quick thing, BPAC, I had the pleasure of last Friday joining some members of BPAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and Salisbury Bike Party, I believe, is their name, last Friday, for their Friday Night Light Bike Run. That was amazing through town. It was amazing, it was fun, but, serious part, it underscored why bicycle and pedestrian safety is important. When you are on two wheels, and I was on there for recreation, but if you were on two wheels, and there's a car that, that is driving past you, and there's not a dedicated space or barrier in between you and that person. I was, I was on Eastern Shore Drive and, on the bicycle, and knowing that there were cars zooming past me, and there was not a barrier, that underscored something for me. While I do not bike every day, there are people who have to, there are people who have to walk. And again, it's up to us to make sure they do so safely. So it was a fun night, we had, we enjoyed ourselves, but I was thinking all the while, I, I was cycling through Salisbury on two wheels and pedaling, paddling knees to chest. I was thinking to myself, wow, we, that's why we have, and again, it's gotten so much heat. But I guarantee those folks who walk in those protected areas are, are, are quite thankful that we do those things, that we spend the money on those things. So that kind of underscored something for me. So I'm grateful for the team, for, for the people who invited me, and invite me again once I rest my shins and my knees, so I can go out there again with you all. That was so fun. Folk Fest, everyone has said it, it was so much fun out there. I mean, it was, I just, I love seeing the people interact, and seeing everybody have a good time, it was great. The TAPS program that, that, that you all brought through, seeing it in action, amazing. And thank you for the, the local restaurateurs and bars to interact with that. There is a concern, if we can revisit the footprint, I know there's a couple restaurants that maybe just feet outside of that, just felt, didn't feel disconnected. So if we can revisit that, make sure that all restaurants in the area, that a lot of people were spending money to go do, you couldn't take your drink out from there, which I was, I could see one of the stages from that restaurant. So let's just revisit that, make sure that it's, 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 there's some continuity there. Going down to, to Chrisfield on Wednesday for the Talls Clambake, get some, some crabs and everything. So I'll talk to Mary Taylor there and see if she can, can carve out some, some time in her schedule to come down here. And then last but not least, again, I want to say to And then last but not least, again, I want to say to Councilwoman Jackson, again, North Prong Park, I know you've been an advocate for that, and, and we, we did some good work with, with that. So thank you for being a driving force in that, and congratulations, that we'll continue to see that. So hopefully, we can break ground on that in our lifetime and get that going, because that's going to be beautiful and really good for the community. So with nothing left, thank you all for your commitment, for your support, and this meeting is now adjourned.